Good evening and welcome to the regular Tuesday, April 7th, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Welcome, all of you that have come out and all of you that are watching at home. Would you please join us for a moment in a moment of silence to begin the meeting? Okay, thank you. Let the record show that all commissioners are present and we do have a quorum and the meeting is called to order. And we'd also like to welcome Mr. Shannon Chapin from Alashir and Winder, the law firm of Alashir and Winder, who is going to be providing us with much-needed legal counsel this evening, kind of keep us honest. So with that, would you rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice
Thank you. And this is a time that's reserved for announcements from the planning commissioners. Are there any announcements this evening from anyone? Richard?
I just would like to thank Pastor Jack in Shoreline for a beautiful Easter at the Rock. It was awesome, an awesome event and great weather. And thanks to Parks and Rec for making the parking lot really nice and flat for made it easy to park all the cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard, no? No others? So then, and Pastor Jack was responsible for the weather too, right?
No.
You've got to have -- it just shows what connections will do for you. Okay, so this is time for public comment on items which are not on tonight's agenda. Any issues or concerns that you have, please come forward, give us your name, and let us know what's on your mind. Okay, so seeing none, we'll proceed with our agenda and move to the consent calendar, which consists tonight only of the current and advanced planning processing list, which you all have in your packets. Are there any questions or would staff like to make any comments or any observations on that?
No comments, just receive and file.
Okay. So do we need a motion for that, Scott? I keep forgetting. Or we just -- no, okay. Excellent. Any comments from the commission?
No.
Chair Teft, were you planning on opening this to public comment?
We did.
The consent calendar as well?
Oh, the consent calendar.
So sorry.
No. Okay, we haven't done that in the past, but that's why you're here. So we will take public comment on the consent calendar if anyone has any remarks on that. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and receive and file the planning processing list and move on to our public hearings. There's been some discussion among staff and ourselves of reshuffling the order of these, but it turns out that people have made plans to be here at certain times, and so I think we'll just proceed with the order as it's listed on your agenda. So the first case here will be case number UP 0-374 and AD 0-098. This is a continued hearing from the June 3 meeting, and this concerns a site at 481 Java Street, and I believe we have a little issue before we start.
Yeah, I have to stand down on this issue. I live right across the street.
Okay, so Whitney, I think you're up.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. This is a continued item, and just to be clear for the record and folks in the audience, I'll give some explanation of what the request is and what the existing nonconformities on site are that sort of prompt these needed approvals, and then we'll go through some slides. So this is a conditional use permit, a parking exception, and a variance request to allow nonconforming additions to an existing nonconforming single-family residence on a very small 2,400-square-foot lot in the R1-S1 zone. The existing house is just over 1,000 square feet, and there is about a 200-square-foot carport there. They are nonconforming with regard to parking. Since it is actually over 1,000 square feet, more than one parking space is required, and there's room on-site under the carport for one parking space only. They are proposing a second-story addition, which is about 650 square feet, including the deck, and because it's an addition of more than 25% of the existing floor area, this requires a conditional use permit approval. The parking exception is requested to allow parking in tandem. The applicants would like to reconstruct the existing nonconforming carport as well. And that brings us to the variance, which is required to allow reconstruction of the carport and also to allow that construction to be within the three-foot side setback. And so just to reiterate, the existing building on-site is nonconforming with regard to the rear setback, and I will show a slide eventually to just summarize this. It's nonconforming with regard to the front setback. The carport existing is nonconforming with regard to the side setback. And taken together, largely due to the small size of the lot, the project exceeds allowable lot coverage of 50%. So let's just quickly go through these slides. This is a little overhead. You can kind of see the pattern of development there in that north Morro Bay neighborhood. And a little closer up aerial view, the site is the third lot down and outlined in green. You can see that the existing development really does already cover quite a bit of the lot. This is a view from the street, down the driveway into the carport, and the front of the house. Again, sort of a closer view of the carport. That fence is inside the property line just a bit, I guess, and the shed on the adjacent property, I believe, encroaches onto their site, the applicant's site. Again, a view from the street. In addition to these lots being only 2,400 square feet, the streets are also narrow, and so this project was before the planning commission last June, and when the planning commission looked at it, they felt that the design was really pretty nice, but that the parking was, in fact, an issue that needed to be solved, and we'll get to that a little bit more, too. This was originally constructed as a duplex, interestingly enough, in 1942. It was converted to a single-family residence in 1975, and the city granted a variance at that time to allow a carport with the requirement that it be setback 10 feet from the front property line, which it is, and that new construction can form, which it doesn't exactly because it seems to encroach now even into the side setback. So here's the site plan. Java Street is over on the left. This is the existing site plan. There's sort of an X there near the top of the screen to indicate the carport and the floor plan. At the head of the carport, there's a storage cabinet and some stairs going into the house. This was a landscape plan that we requested, and you can see there's no landscaping proposed on the site, but there is, like so many places in Morro Bay, because the right-of-way is not developed fully out with sidewalks and complete improvements, there is a portion of the right-of-way that people typically kind of use as their front yard, and that's where some changes to landscaping around the existing street tree are proposed. This also shows sort of a paving pattern for this second proposed tandem space. You can see on this slide also that the stairs were reworked so that there's no exterior stairway, which previously had kind of blocked the usability of two parking spaces along that side of the house. So I have this as the revised carport because it came to our attention that what was proposed would have exceeded the already over 50% law coverage. It would have even further expanded the nonconformity, and so it was reduced down some. This is the, just a big room with a half-bath proposed on the second floor and a deck facing the street. So front elevation, with the addition setback, some changes to the front elevation to kind of expand the porch there. This is the side with the carport, some storage under the stairs, hopefully to kind of replace some of the storage that's used in the carport now. The other side elevation to the east, the rear. And we did ask for a color and materials board. When I photocopied it, of course, the colors didn't come true, and so I'm going to ask Gina to pass around what was turned in as for color and materials so you can get a more, a better sense of what it is they're proposing. Like, it's not going to be pink, as far as I can tell. This is a summary that's in the staff report of zoning, so we'll just do this quickly. Required front yard is 10 feet. Currently, the building is four feet, almost 10 inches setback, not quite half the requirement, and they're proposing to retain that setback. The interior side, actually both side yard setbacks are, yeah, both side yard setbacks are three feet. On the west side, where the carport is now, it's, I'm not totally clear, different plans have called out different measurements, but less than three feet for sure, and they're proposing about one foot eight inches for the new carport, so that does not comply with our current standards. On the east side, they do comply. It's more than three feet. At the rear, the minimum rear yard setback in this area is five feet, and currently they have, well, let's call that at two feet 5.5 inches, and they're proposing to retain that. Lot coverage maximum, as I noted, is 50%. They're roughly at 57%. With a few little changes, they'll be a little closer to 56%, still more than our maximum typically. The height is fine. The maximum is 25 feet. They'll be just over 21 feet. And parking, really, again, the ever-present parking issue. Two covered and enclosed spaces are required for houses in this neighborhood and elsewhere in town that are over 1,000 square feet. This currently has a carport. They were proposing a carport space and one open tandem space, which could be in compliance with the zoning ordinance if you approve a parking exception. And a parking exception is just required in any event because they're not proposing the two covered enclosed spaces. I don't know if this project summary is not super easy to read, but I have one here, and if you have questions, I can refer to that. So I believe that's all of my slides that I have here. So I think I'll just cut to staff's recommendation and then try and answer questions that you have. Considering the planning commission's previous reaction to the project, and staff is recommending approval of the use permit to and allow addition of more than 25% of the existing floor area to the existing nonconforming structure. Staff is also recommending approval of a parking exception to allow tandem parking. However, after considering how the carport might actually function and what our required parking dimensions are, and the fact that it would extend into the side setback, and just how usable it would, in fact, be, staff is recommending denial of the variance that's required to approve this new carport. And as you, as planning commissioners, I'm sure are aware, variance findings are prescribed by state law and can only be based on a pretty narrow set of circumstances that clearly distinguish the subject property as somehow different than other properties in the vicinity with the same zoning. In staff's evaluation, this site is actually fairly typical of surrounding properties, and this is another reason for the recommendation for denial of the variance aspect. There is a draft resolution at the end, the first Exhibit A, to the staff report, which outlines staff's recommendation and includes associated findings and recommended conditions. So that's the end of my presentation, but I'm happy to try and answer your questions.
Thank you, Whitney. Are there questions for staff? Kevin?
Currently, and I did visit the site today, there is the one carport, and I think you had mentioned that it was in somewhat disrepair. Is that being utilized at all for parking?
Not currently, to my knowledge. I mean, it hasn't been since I've been aware of this project.
So all the parking now would be, is currently the street?
Well, that and there is, as I noted, the undeveloped portion of right-of-way that kind of functions as driveway, but that is, in fact, in the right-of-way, yes.
So currently, the run-up to the carport right now is in the right-of-way?
Most of it, except for, well, the carport is set 10 feet back.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if the posts removed in the carport to within the setbacks, would that still, would that be a viable?
The carport has to be basically completely rebuilt. So if they moved the posts, set a beam line across there, support the carport, and then have the overhang extend to where the existing is, would that be a legal one-car parking spot?
It would not quite meet our standard. I guess it would be a legal compact car parking spot because our standard is now 10 by 20 feet, and typically if there's an obstruction on one side, like a wall, like the wall of a building, or in a single-car garage, for instance, the required minimum is 11 feet. So now we're down to nine something. I mean, it doesn't meet the stated standard in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. It would alleviate one of the...
It would alleviate the side yard setback issue.
Yeah, the side setback issue. Okay. And let me get this straight.
But it wouldn't alleviate the lot coverage issue.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're, the staff is suggesting that we approve the project, approve the variance, but not approve the parking exemption, correct?
So just to be clear, I know this is a little confusing because we use similar codes for parking exception and variance, and in fact, there is a third project number that's been assigned to this for the, to differentiate the parking exception from the variance. So staff is recommending approval of the use permit, approval of a parking exception to allow two open tandem spaces without the carport, and denial of the variance altogether that had to do with reconstruction of a carport that put the whole project over lot coverage in what's going to be in the setback.
Okay, so essentially, we're, we would rather have open parking there, you know, an uncovered parking than have one nonconforming covered parking and one noncovered parking? Is that what the staff?
That's the staff's recommendation, and that's up to your planning commission. I mean, other options you could consider might be locating the carport more toward the rear of the two parking area. There aren't really that many options there. It's what's proposed, narrowing the carport in its proposed location, putting it further back with the open parking in front, or just having two open spaces. To get two spaces on-site, which was, which was our goal.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael? Yeah, I'd just like to follow up a little bit on Jerry's question. If, if the commission were to decide that a somewhat narrower carport would be preferable to having two open spaces, would that, would a parking exception allow that to happen within the setbacks, or would there need to be, what would be the instrument that would
You ask an interesting question, and one I don't have a great answer for, only because I'm not sure how the city's interpreted that component of it in the past. We were looking at it from a, from a standpoint of the carports being reconstructed and it wasn't going to comply with setback requirements, and then they were asking for the variance, but there was nothing special happening on this lot because it's the same size and configuration and slope as the other lots around it. I'm not sure if the city in the past has traditionally used the parking exception process for location of structure. You know, that's a development standard related to setbacks.
No, I'm just, I'm sorry, let me just clarify. What I was, what I was asking was if, if the commission wished to allow or require a substandard in terms of width, covered parking space, what would that require? Would that be a parking exception? Would it be a variance? Would it be?
Yes, that would be a parking exception, just the width issue.
Right. Okay.
And then the variance would be associated with the lot coverage?
Right. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Michael?
Whitney, just to, so I'm sure in my own mind here, the lot coverage issue is because of the carport.
Well, in part, yes. I mean, there are other, you know, there are other parts of the, of the residence that extend into the front and rear setback, and so they could be considered part of the lot coverage issue as well.
But the carport counts toward the lot coverage?
Yeah, it does.
No other questions? So we'll open this up to public comment, and traditionally, we'd like to invite the applicant to speak, or the applicant representative to speak first, so.
Good evening. Oh, good evening. My name's Kathleen Brigancil. I am the draftsman who drew all the drawings. I live in Roa Grande, but the job here is in Morro Bay, and this is Jose. He's one of the owners. And I have a question. You can get into a car, into any garage, that's only eight foot wide. So moving the posts in, we could do, because the actual car would be parked in the area beyond it, beyond the posts. So if we were to put the post inside the setback, but the parking space itself would be quote-unquote "in the 11-foot area," even though it's not, it would be wide enough, correct?
I mean, that makes sense to me. I don't, it just depends how you lay out your parking space, you know, if it goes all the way, I mean, you can, parking itself can encroach into the setback, but your structure still, the way it was shown on the plans, you know, the eve encroaches closer than two feet to the property line, which is, I failed to mention, another zoning ordinance thing. You might be able to deal with that. If the covered area, you know, doesn't encroach more than one, you know, the eve can encroach as much as one foot into that three feet.
Okay.
But the post technically should not.
Right. I'd just put the posts exactly where they were originally, so, but I could move them in so that the space that you drive through is at least eight feet wide, which, for a single-car garage, would be an eight-foot door.
With requirements.
Right?
Right, as long as you can provide the 10 by 20 parking area.
Inside.
Although, I guess we get into a, we also get into a little coverage issue again, which I, I've still had some difficulty with these calculations, but from my understanding, what was approved was a 10 by 20 carport, or 200 square feet of carport. Even the smallest number that you're showing now is 220 square feet. So, of course, taking away that storage structure kind of takes you back within the coverage. I mean, just because we're working on such a small lot, a little bit makes a big difference.
Right.
And the other, the other thing just to consider about the carport or not carport, if the carport's not there, there's the opportunity for some kind of storage structure. With the carport, you are maxed, maxed, and maxed, and, and no accessory, no further accessory structure could be accommodated on the site, so.
Do you need it? Another structure, that's the thing, is I think they'd be fine with that. Doing the smaller carport and making sure that we stayed within the 200 square feet that you need.
Can we be approving a variance or a construction or not? Because it's over coverage.
Still a, still a variance, so the planning commission would have to be willing to grant. It was basically two variances. It was a variance on lot coverage and a variance to setback. We're discussing options for removing one of the variances.
Right.
We still don't support it.
Right.
Any other questions you might have for me?
Yeah, yeah. Then, then one question for you now. Would you be compliant or acceptable to moving the structure to the rear of the property?
Can you put your carport in the back? Carport in the back? Yeah?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
One more question.
Right now, the carport is not a porch or a deck for the upper level?
No.
And you're willing, are you willing to, to put something in the project that says you would not fill any upper level on that width of the carport?
Oh, yeah, because we already have a deck upstairs. We wouldn't, there would be no reason to.
Well...
But I can put something in there.
The reason isn't as important to me as the fact that if we give you the variance, you theoretically could come in and put something on the upper floor.
Okay, well, make sure it's specified in the drawings, not to put anything up there.
Just a question.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item on the agenda? So seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who'd like to start off? Michael?
I think...
I think when someone offers to do a house that's 21 feet wide in a place where all
the other houses are 35 feet wide on the streetscape, we ought to take it. And I would be happy to not see the carport there adding mass to the dwelling, and I think it would make a lovely open space there. The people who live around it were aware potentially that the variance had existed before for parking in that configuration, so I don't think we're granting anything special because that was already there and is an existing gift. So my sense is if you look back at the existing streetscape and you see the new projects that are built, if this becomes a teardown, we'll see the full width built up with a two-car garage in the front, and I'd rather see this.
Actually, I think that the plans and the facade are, really will be wonderful in that area. They're very nice, and I think they would make a big difference. My only concern is if we're, if the carport, even though it's somewhat dilapidated at this point in time, is not being used as a parking space, the whole issue is to get cars off, off the street and onto the property. I just want to make sure that if we approve this, that that will continue to happen, that cars will not be parked on the street, that they would be parked in the carport or in the area designated for parking, and relieve some of the congestion on the street. It is very narrow, and I, and I know that there had been some neighborhood concerns about additional parking on this, that street.
Jerry?
I think it's not the ideal situation, but I would like to see the carport moved to the rear, have the posts brought in to within the setback. It would still have access. In fact, you could actually have a rear, a rear wall go across there if you need, needed to, to have the rear support at that point. And what that would do is, instead of having the covered structure at the front of the property, it would further, further help with that open space feeling. And I, I had real concerns with this with the carport in front, and then the tandem parking in the rear, that, that the tandem parking would basically turn into another deck space, another patio space, that would never be used for parking. But with the carport towards the rear, then that, that would, you know, would help the parking being in the carport, and that, that other parking spot in the front would more likely be used as a parking, parking spot rather than storage and a barbecue and, you know, a kiddie pool or something. So I, you know, I, I would like to see covered parking wherever possible, even if it isn't, if it isn't to the absolute inch of what the specifications were. So I would support a, a reduction in the width of the, the access by bringing the posts in and allowing, allowing the carport to be rebuilt towards the rear.
Well, I, I share Jerry's concern about the location of the carport. I think the, the way it's drawn now just really looks like a carport and a patio behind it, and I think, I think there's a good chance that that's how it would end up being The only, the only problem I have is I don't know how we're going to get to the required variance findings from where we're at right now to allow that to happen. If we can't, then I would be in favor of the solution that is suggested by staff, which is to have two uncovered parking spaces. But I would, I would add a condition to the project that the two parking spaces are to be maintained free of patio furniture, stored items, and other obstructions to vehicle So I can go with whichever one of those options is feasible, and, and which can be supported legally, and thank God we have some advice on that tonight.
Might as well use them.
Right. The, the, I do have one other issue with the proposal as it now sits. It looks to me, from, from looking at the drawings, it looks to me as if the eastern half of the front wall is going to be removed and completely rebuilt. But it's still being rebuilt outside of the setback lines. I don't think the code allows that, at least to my reading. When I read the section that applies to this, it says, and I'll skip a few words to make the point, but it says, "The alteration must be in conformance with this title," meaning the setbacks. And I don't, I, I have a hard time finding that that alteration, which is still in the front setback, is in compliance with the zoning code. So I'd like, I'd like to bring that up for discussion by the commission as well.
Well, I'll start, and I'm glad I have a backup here, and our community development manager. It does say alteration, expansion, alteration, addition. We did initially look to this, we, we first got, oh, so, sorry. We first got this project as a set of building plans, and so we did look at the building plans to try and ascertain just how much reconstruction was happening there. And it's significant, and yet, in Morro Bay, I, I don't know of an instance where we have forced an alteration within an existing non-conforming footprint to be removed or made to conform to the setback, if that was the non-conformity. And without some more specific threshold, I know I personally as staff didn't, didn't feel comfortable in the end, even considering that of variance. Now, that could, that's just staff. Planning manager, who may have a different take on this.
It is, I mean, something that, I spoke with you at the counter about, Dr. Teft. And because we don't have any, there is no, there is no language in the code that talks about what you can do with, how much alteration can you do with those portions of the building that are non-conforming? Can you alter the foundation? Can you alter the wall? What if they just want to maintain the wall? What if they just want to restucco it, put new siding on it? Can you put new windows in it? There's no, there's nothing that speaks to the limitations there. I think a lot of those things I just described to you are probably, in a normal circumstance, maintenance items. Here, you have a, you know, a project that's in front of you, and they're proposing a bit of a reconfiguration, you know, reconstruction in that area, but for the eight months that I've been here, this has not been something that we've had a discussion of any length at, at the planning commission, and so don't know really what the thoughts of the planning commission are on this type of thing.
Well, I just, I don't, in my, in my, to my memory, we haven't had the circumstance that would warrant, that would bring up the discussion. Because, because one of the typical findings that we make in these circumstances is that it, the, something to the effect that conforming with the code would not be feasible because it would involve major reconstruction. But here, the amount of reconstruction is exactly the same whether you make it feasible with the, whether you make it consistent with the code or not consistent with the code. So it's, it's kind of a, a situation where that finding can't be made, and that's why I think it's a little bit unique and a little bit different from some of the other things.
You get no argument from me. We struggled with it internally.
Yeah. Well, that's why, that's why I'm bringing it up for discussion by the commission, to get sort of everybody's input on that.
Well, one of the things I, you know, I viewed it as kind of, as a repair of existing structure, and they are reducing the, the encroachment on that, the front part of the building, even though they're not bringing the wall back, the new wall back to the, the setback, it is an improvement, and it is, it helps with articulation, and it really would be, they would be hard-pressed to bring it any further back and still keep, you know, keep us, you know, a viable structure there. It starts to get tight. So, you know, to me, I was viewing it more as an improvement to the existing situation and helping, helping out rather than being, trying to get around the rules.
I agree with Jerry, and when I was looking at it, I'm, I was just pleased that it wasn't getting any worse. And I, and looking at the plans, I didn't think there was any way that it was going to get better. I, you know, you're off by, what, five feet? Make it very difficult.
I guess I'd say it always depends. I think in this case, I, I think the articulation that they have, it's the main entrance to the house, they're trying to improve the right-of-way in front instead of pavement, I think those things are in its favor to, to let that happen, the way it's shown.
So I think, I think, I think you have a consensus for, for the most part here on that. And then, so then, going back to the parking situation. I guess the question is, if we wanted to allow a carport either in the current position or in the, the back, how would we get to variance findings?
I guess it's the question I'd ask too, is if we grant that, how do we protect from that being built on, up above too? Because to me, that's a, that's no, that's a no-deal. If something can be built above that carport, if we grant it, I don't want to go along with that unless we protect that shaft of space up above on the second floor.
Well, that's the easy part, because that's just a condition of approval. The finding is the hard part. And, and any further site development here, because the structure remains non-conforming in at least three ways, it would have to get a conditional use permit for any further site development, so you would see it again. But we can, we can condition that. Finding what distinguishes this particular property from other properties in the area frankly stumps me at the moment, so I'm certainly open to suggestions there. That wasn't very helpful, was it?
Well, we have a, an existing condition that, that we're actually improving upon. Is, is, is that a basis for the variance? Where we're, we would be relieving, we would be, we would be allowing a, I mean, we would be creating a non-conforming parking, parking space, covered parking space, and we would actually be reducing the, the lot coverage from what, what is there now.
You are improving the situation? Unfortunately, the way our code deals with non-conformities is, once you remove them, you're not supposed to put them back. I mean, and that makes sense, right? You have a non-conforming thing, and you can repair and maintain it, but you get rid of it, it's gone. But they're coming forward and asking for the variance, so we're still, now we're back to the, okay, how do we make findings in support of the variance?
Well, one of the things I, I have a problem with in, in not having the carport there is that then it becomes a pure patio space, you know, where, where it's more likely to be used as a carport if there's a structure above it, it's more likely to be used as parking if there's, if there's a, you know, if there's a covered structure above it. You know, I, I see it as more of a, more of a patio than parking if we don't have the, if we don't have the roof above it.
Could, could we, could we perhaps review what the findings are that we need, that we would need to make for variance?
Yes.
I remember them in general, but not in specific.
We'll just go to the staff report, which I know.
Right. Good point.
On page seven of the staff report, and I'll, I'll skip to the bottom because this comes right out of our zoning ordinance. It's required to find that this is not a special privilege, that the variance granted shall be subject to such conditions as well as will assure that the adjustments thereby authorized shall not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with a limitation upon other properties in the vicinity and zoning district in which the subject property is situated. So we have been discussing conditions, and we may be able to make that finding. Let's go to the next finding, which I think is the most problematic. Special circumstances with the property. That because of special circumstances applicable to subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, the strict application of this title is found to deprive subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical zone classification. So typically, this is, you know, about the property itself, size, the shape, the topography, location, something special about the surroundings. Because of, so I just.
So I guess the question then would be, does that definition include existing development on the property? Or does this only have to do with the land itself?
It becomes pretty specific when you look at state law.
That's what.
It's, it's defined, I think, much more, it's much, defined much more specifically. With our code, it, it seems to be a bit more liberal in its language. So there is an interpretation aspect there as to what that is, and that probably is well within the authority of the planning commission to make. Again, because of the way ours, our, the language for our variance findings are worded, they're looser than, than those that you find in, in state law.
But, but we do have to make findings that are consistent with state law as well, don't we?
I mean, we should be, yes.
I have a question for Scott. If we had approved it with it in the same place, the carport in the same place, not moving it to the back, and it, would that be looked at as a repair? Or is it of an existing non-conforming structure?
Once you remove it, it's gone. To put any structure back there and get a variance, it's.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you were, you know, if they came in and they, they walked into my front counter and asked me, "We'd like to repair a post because we have dry rot on it, and replace it." I'd probably let them do that because that's repair. And they're not taking the whole thing down, they could support it, and they could support the remainder of the carport, replace that post, put it back in place, you'd be good to go. You take the whole thing down, it's gone. I would find that inconsistent with the non-conforming portion of our ordinance that says you can repair those things, but once you get rid of them, you're not supposed to put them back. Although, they're coming forward with the variance request, so.
I understand the concern about the patio, but I think if you look at the layout of the house, the only way in and out is the front door. There isn't any side door anymore, there's no rear door. So to utilize the rear part as a patio, you have to walk out the front door, all the way down the driveway to the rear. So I'm not seeing that that's the aesthetic part to sit in on the lot. I'm not seeing that there's anything special about being back there as a, as a patio, it'd be sheltered from the wind, like we have quite a bit, but I'm, I'm not getting a sense that the carport is a benefit to the neighbors. I'm not necessarily seeing it as a benefit to the property. If I was one of the neighbors, I'd advocate I'd rather not see the carport personally, and I'd advocate keeping it free from any structure, which makes the house seem smaller. But that's just an opinion.
And that would not require variance, then we're, then we're consistent with staff recommendations?
Yeah, I, I just see that that, there isn't another good place for a barbecue on this lot.
Well, I still, I still would, I still would strongly advocate for a condition of approval that says that this area has to be maintained clear of stored items and patio furniture and.
I'd have.
Anything else that would obstruct parking a car.
It does, it, it seems like that would be a hard one to enforce.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. But, you know, my, my vote is to move, if, if we could make the findings, would be to move it back, move the carport. move the carport to the back rather than leave it where it is and reconstruct it where it is. But if, you know, if it's the commission, if the rest of the commissioners want to see it removed entirely, then it would actually, you know, I can, I can understand that. I just think there's going to be more of a chance of using it as parking if the, if the carport is existing and further to the back.
Well, the other, the other thing that will tend to encourage it to be used as parking is the landscaping. It's now going to be where cars are being parked. I mean, that's something that can be enforced as part of the inspection process. And I agree, I agree with you. I mean, my preferred, just personally, my preferred arrangement would be to have the carport in the rear. I just, I'm concerned that we're going to get in trouble with trying to find variance findings for that arrangement.
I was just going to ask Whitney if she's found anything that would support.
No, but can I call you at 3:00 AM? Something has been doing. It's going to bother me, but I, 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 quite honestly, I'm not. I mean, it would be a stretch, just quite frankly, it would be a stretch. And regarding the concern about the carport versus patio, I mean, there's, you know, we, we will condition that the carport be used for parking just the same way. And, you know, a carport sort of lends itself to other uses, just the way garages tend to lend themselves to other uses. And, you know, we do have the, the situation here where there is some on-street parking, albeit perpendicular. I know it's kind of unofficial, but just from a practical standpoint, you could without some structure or something in the way, pretty reasonably get two tandem parking spaces on the site. I mean, most cars aren't 20 feet long. So just, just looking at it from a practical standpoint of, of how do we like really accommodate two cars on the site, which seemed to have been everybody's main concern, I think we can do that with two open tandem parking spaces. And if I could think of a finding that would enable the variance, I mean, obviously that would be great, but we're in a lot coverage situation here too. So, you know, there may be a trade-off. Do they want to lose some of their footprint of the house to then also have a carport? I don't know, probably not, but that would be another option.
Well, I think, personally, I mean, I think we could leave that option with, with them. We, you know, we could, we could certainly approve essentially what you presented and suggested. And if they, if that's something they'd like to do, they can, you know, apply to do that at a future date. I, I agree, I don't sense that happening. The other thing that I, the other comment that I would like to make, because we, we received a couple of letters regarding the parking situation and the, suggesting that because there's an addition, there could be more people and, and, you know, and I, I just would like to note that they're not adding any bedrooms and they're not adding, adding any bathrooms. So it's not really a situation where it, the, the new residents can easily accommodate more people than currently live there. So have we found a solution we can all live with, even though we don't love it? Okay.
I move to approve resolution number PC 08-14 with the conditions that the space is left open for parking, free of encumbrances. And if they do want to come back with a modification to the, to the home in order to, you know, accommodate a additional parking, that we'd be open to looking at it.
And that would, let's see. That would include.
Would be uncovered parking.
Right. And so that would include resolution 08-15 as well?
Yes.
I'll second.
And Chair Taft, if I may, for the first and the second, would that also include a finding in the resolution that no exceptions to the exemptions are applicable under sequel guidelines 1500, 15,302?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second? Is there a discussion on the motion? So could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sorensen? Aye. Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lur?
Aye.
Commissioner Taft?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
Could someone? So we're, we'll, we'll move on now to agenda item B2. We're just going to pause for one second for Commissioner Sodowsky to rejoin us, so. And for us to rustle all of our papers. Welcome back. So, item B2 is case number CP 0-442 and UP 0-381 involving a proposed development at 301 Little Creek, Little Moro Creek Road. And I believe that Cindy is going to enlighten us.
Good evening, Chairperson Taft and members of the planning commission. This item before you is coastal development permit CP 0-442 and conditional use permit dash UP 0-381. The application is for permit approval for a new bike skills progression park on vacant city-owned property at 301 Little Moro Creek Road, which is, as I just said, on vacant city-owned property, excuse me, and parking to be provided on adjoining PG&E-owned property, which I will get to later in the presentation. The vacant land immediately east of the city property, just to point it out right here. So where the red arrow is pointing on the screen highlights the parcel property boundaries. The green line that you see on the screen is the city-owned property. The area immediately east of that, where the red arrow was pointing, is the PG&E-owned portion of the property, which is where the parking would be provided, that fronts onto Little Moro Creek. So staff has prepared a variety of slides. And I will go through these with, followed with some simulations of the proposed bike park and then followed by an analysis of the project based on our general plan and local coastal plan guidelines. This slide here shows in closer detail an aerial image of the property, which I just showed you. And as I already said, the red arrow points to the area where the property would take vehicular access. The parking would, parking entrance to the bike park would front on Little Moro Creek. There would be access, and I guess there is no red pointer on here, there would be access to the bike park on the west side of the property for pedestrians and bicyclists. Okay, whoops. He wants to ride a doggy bike. So this next slide shows the zoning for this area. And this is a piece of property that has multiple zone designations. Technically, it is M1 PD ISP. And that is a lot of letters of the alphabet. That zoning designation is intended to be, M1 is a light industrial zone. The PD refers to the planned development overlay. The I is an interim use overlay and the SP denotes its proximity at the southern boundary of the North Main specific plan. So here is the site plan image, and I'll show you some other slides that zoom in a little bit more. The bike park would include installation of three bike trails, approximately 600 to 750 lineal feet, along with earthen and wooden skills features for riders of varying abilities, whether beginning, intermediate, or advanced. In this slide presentation, and I apologize, oh, I guess I do have a pointer. This trail here at the southern boundary is shown on the plans as the beginner's trail, trail two, which would be the intermediate, which curves here with this, I don't know, this loop here. That would be the intermediate. And then, of course, the advanced trail here is, would run along the length of the northern portion. The site plans include amenities such as park benches, signage detailing, rules of conduct for the bike park, along with park hours. The project has been conditioned to provide for garbage and recycling containers as well. A four-foot tall snow fencing detail is proposed around the perimeter, perimeter of the site. The plans before you currently do show that there is no opening on the main street side. There, that is in correction in the, in the plans. There would be, as I said, pedestrian and cyclist access along the main street side, but only vehicle access, as you can see, on the eastern side of the property. Of course, this is the parking area. So a condition has been added also to ensure that riders do not take lateral access to the park across private property. The vacant parcels to the north and the south are owned by PG&E. The permission from PG&E that the Bike Park Group has obtained is solely just for this parking area. And another condition has been added that the proposed fencing currently shown on your plans is orange. Be changed to either a green or an earth-toned color to better blend into the site. Access, as I stated, to the park for vehicles would be from Little Moro Creek. Landscaping is proposed to be native grasses due to the interim use. And I will also give you some more details about landscaping in a later slide. So this is a, this slide is the same as the earlier slide. It's just zoomed in a little bit more to see the west side of the lot. Unfortunately, I can only zoom in so far before it blurs out. But you can, in this image, you can see a little bit more detail of the curved nature of the jumps and berms and platforms. And when the applicant speaks, I'm sure they will talk more in the, in the vernacular of the various trails. This is a zoomed-in site plan image of the eastern side of the property. So the entrance over here, this is Little Moro Creek, the five standard-sized gravel parking spaces and the ADA, ADA-required van accessible space with the ADA path of travel. And then in the next few slides, I am showing existing site conditions. This is a slide that shows the viewer looking from Little Moro Creek Road West across the site. It's hard to see from this slide image because it looks like it's a relatively flat lot. But in fact, just as you get past this part right here, it does slope down and it is, does slope. And so in this next slide, it's from the opposite image. You are standing on Main Street, looking east toward Little Moro Creek. And again, it's kind of hard to see the slope of this. So in these next several slides, these were included as exhibit C. And these are visual simulations that the applicant has provided that would show three dimensionally what the course layout would look like. They are representative of the site plan that is shown with the three slides, showing the parking here. This parking layout here is not dimensioned to match with the site plan. This is purely for informational purposes, but it gives the viewer a visual simulation of, one, the sloped nature of the lot, and then the various three-dimensional features of this. The applicant has also informed the city that the, that there may be minor course layout corrections to the plans based on site constraints identified during the actual grading of the site, depending on maneuverability and testing out of the lot to ensure that certain bike conditions are realized. It takes a minimum amount of clearance space to develop the speed to go over the jumps. And some of those conditions are unknown, but again, they anticipate that there would only be minor modifications to any proposed course layout. And so I'll just walk you through here, there's about 10 slides. This is also a good chance for the public to see what some of the visual simulations. It kind of gives you a more detailed look than that site plan image, which was kind of far away and may have been harder to see. This is showing the western side of the property. And this would be looking from the north, looking south-southeast. You would see here, this would be the advanced trail, so you can see that it's a little bit steeper than the beginner trail over here, which is, it looks a little bit flatter. And then this would be aerial image. So these are all presenting different angle, the same course layout, but just different angles, depending on where one is standing. This image here would be, I would imagine, if you were on your bike, getting ready to go on the first trail there, this would be the beginner on your left. And then here would be the advanced on the right. This is a wooden platform that the bicyclists would be on and that they would kickstart it and it would jump down here. This is proposed to be more than two feet off the ground. It's important to note that there are no permanent structures proposed as part of this permit application. And that are the slides. So getting into the project analysis, let me catch up here with my notes. So during staff's review of the project for consistency with general plan, local coastal plan, and zoning ordinance, staff reviewed a multitude of factors. Just to give you a little background, in 2013, the, at their August city council meeting, the council authorized a memorandum of understanding for design and permit processing of a fenced-in bike park at this Little Moro Creek Road location. The council supported the idea of a bike park and directed staff to work with the local bike park interest group to support the development and operation of a bike park on city-owned property. In early 2015, at, at the January city council meeting, a second MOU was authorized for the construction, repair, and maintenance of the bike park. The MOU details that repair and maintenance responsibility, trash cleanup, other details, as you will find in your staff report, are the responsibility of the applicant. The MOU also outlines city responsibilities. One of those responsibilities would be that the city recreation department would be responsible for establishing and publishing rules of conduct, conduct for city bike park operations. The city recreation department director also retains the authority to close the park if it is deemed necessary to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the community, or if there is some type of risk, or if there is some type of a repair and maintenance that's not being performed. The city does retain that responsibility and authority. Parking, so as stated earlier, the parking provided for the property would consist of five spaces plus one van-accessible paved ADA parking space. And the applicant has received permission from the, the owner of that property where those parking spaces would be located. That's PG&E. The city has received a copy of that agreement with PG&E. We don't have the actual signed copy, but we do expect to receive that within a week. And that would be prior to the city council meeting. The, so the idea of the five parking spaces. So the idea of the five parking spaces, the city's parking ordinance does not have a specific use category for bike parks as it relates to calculating parking requirements. Because of the large size of the property, a strict interpretation of parking calculations would clearly be far more than that, than the number that is proposed. However, under the PD overlay, the planned development overlay, modifications of standards or deviation from requirements are allowed if found by the planning commission that greater than normal public benefit would be realized, such as an improved or innovative site design, or that provides for greater community benefit. The project as designed with the six parking spaces allows for flexibility in course layout. It meets the space limitation to allow for riders of varying ability, and it serves a greater audience of the community with the three tracks, and also allows for the clearance purposes. Under planning condition number five, a condition has been added that the planning department would reevaluate parking needs based on the census of actual parking demand. And so, we don't know exactly how successful this park is going to be. The city did previously have a bike park from 2000 to 2005 at the Atascadero Road location next to the former Flippo's Ice Skating Rink, and so we have that information to go from, and then based on the staff reports, the findings and conditions, and then the feedback that we've gotten from Recreation Department on how that went. So that this planning condition number five would allow staff to reevaluate parking need within six months and present that as a report to the Planning Commission and determine whether or not additional requirements would be necessary under this use permit process. So as far as traffic, a traffic study was not prepared for this specific project because the project as presented to the city is intended to be a recreational opportunity for primarily youth residents of the community, and of course, riders of any age. It is intended that the majority of park users would ride their bike to the park and not arrive by vehicle. However, last October, the city Public Works Department did have a traffic study done, and that report's dated October 2014 by Omni Means Engineering. And per the recommendations of that report, two radar feedback signs were recently installed. The conclusions of that traffic report noted that the traffic volume at that intersection did not meet the warrant requirements for either a signal at Radcliffe and Main, nor did it meet the threshold level for a multi-way stop sign. But it did recommend radar feedback signs, and those have been put in to encourage drivers to control their speed. The speed south of that intersection at Radcliffe and Main is posted at 25 miles per hour. North of that intersection is posted at 35. Staff did get comments from the public during this 10-day public noticing period prior to this meeting, and that information was shared with those members of the public that either phoned or came into the office and explained the results of that. It's also important to note, too, that the anticipated peak usage of the park is not intended, or not expected to be during what would be peak hours for residents of nearby residential neighborhoods. It would be anticipated that those peak hours would be afternoon usage. It's not intended that the park is going to be, have its peak usage at AM or PM times, or especially AM anyway, because I don't know many kids that like to wake up at 8:00 in the morning to go ride their bike, but that might be different in the summertime. So moving on to landscaping and screening. A separate landscaping and screening plan was not submitted with a formal application. The landscaping information was incorporated onto the title page, or the site plan page of your plans, and at the bottom, it does note that vegetation would be established, seating done with a pre-approved city-approved seed mix design. So a condition has been added to require a landscape plan within 90 days that denotes landscaping details such as location and type of seed mix design, whether or not there would be any bark usage or other landscaping amenities to add to the aesthetics of the site. But because of the slope of the property and the interim use, it was not, well, excuse me, because of the slope of the property and then the visibility being surrounded by two vacant lots, it was determined that screening the property would be infeasible based on the size of that, and it would not, it would necessarily involve an incredible amount of screening to effectively screen this lot, which is a third of an acre in size. And then also because it's intended to be an interim use, which leads me into my next point. So under the interim use overlay guidelines in our zoning ordinance, and as further described in the staff report, interim uses such as this recreational use are allowed in this zone for certain properties, such as this one, until such time as the, until such time as the property is needed for its primary use. The city owns this property. The primary use for this property is M1, which is light industrial. And under the interim use permit requirements, Planning Commission may approve a conditional use permit if the following three conditions are met, and I will just briefly go through them. They're in your staff report. If A, the proposed uses are limited to relocatable, non-permittable structures or existing structures, and there are no structures on this site. B, if the proposed use is subordinate to the character of the visual setting, and in this situation, there would be no structures. It would basically be the grading of the course to allow for these three trails. And then C, if the non-owner applicant agrees to remove the interim use after notice from the property owners that the site is necessary for the primary use in the base zoning district. And the city has no short-term goals to develop that property, at least to my knowledge, for industrial uses. So however, though, as an interim use, a condition of approval has been added to permit the proposed bike park for a period of no more than five years, as was consistent with the previous bike park, with opportunity for renewal of the permit at that time and subject to approvals of Planning Commission at that time. So as I stated before, staffs reviewed this project for consistency with general plan and LCP goals and policies. Although the city has provided for an increase in Class 1 bike lanes over the years, in conversation with the city's Recreation Director, there has been an unmet need for off-road bike facilities. The project would also provide additional recreational opportunities consistent with the city's access and recreation element in the general plan, and also the city's coastal access and recreation policies chapter of the local coastal plan. And of course, is also consistent with the Recreation Department's facilities plan that they have. It's actually dated, but it's from 1985 to 1990. Because this property, as I stated before, is located within a PD overlay, the code requires that projects on publicly-owned land be reviewed by Planning Commission with a recommendation to City Council for final approval. So this, as a publicly-owned piece of property, will require a recommendation after your review and analysis. It won't be final approval tonight. It will be agendized. Your recommendation will be taken forward to City Council. So if you do have concerns about the project, or if you want to recommend that conditions be added or conditions be subtracted, staff will record that, and that will be reflected in the staff report that we take to City Council. We do have an agenda date for this. Of course, subject to completing the action requested tonight, it would be heard by the City Council at the, this is April, the second meeting in April, and I think that's the 28th. So this would be an agenda item on the April 20th Council meeting. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the findings and analysis in the staff report, forward a favorable recommendation to the City Council to approve the requested coastal development permit and conditional use permit for the bike park with the incorporation of conditions of approval via Planning Commission Resolution 09-15. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for listening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions for Cindy?
Excellent presentation. Thank you. And part of it that you had mentioned, that the speed limit, I'm concerned about the additional bicycle traffic on Main, and the, and one part of it is at 25 miles an hour, and then it changes to 35 miles an hour. Has any thought been given to maintain it at 25 miles an hour in both areas? And then, I know that there is a bike path that runs right along Main. Is that going to be a sufficient barrier to the road? Does that need to be enlarged, or is that a correct size? I believe, now, when you think about kids after school going, which I think you're right, there's not going to be that many in the morning, except on weekends, but you're really going in, if it's going to be open until 7:00, you're open, that 5:00 hour, 5:00 to 6:00, there's going to be some pretty fast commute travel coming down that way. And I just, there is an opportunity for a tragedy, and those are my concerns.
Yeah, I would just say that in conversations with Public Works, our city traffic engineer, Rob Leibig, also a city engineer, has looked at that intersection. There's been no discussion to change the posted speed limit. I don't know if that would require Caltrans consent, or how that comes into that. I've talked to both him and our engineering manager, Rick Sauerwein, about that intersection, and they have noted that they expect that there would be negligible increases in traffic at that intersection, but as far as the traffic that is not coming from Radcliffe, that is just coming, that is just traveling Main Street, there's been no discussion about changing the speed limit. And then also, too, the bike lane thing that you mentioned, I don't think that there would be the sufficient width to increase the bike width of the bike lane, but that's something that I could look into. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Is there any paving material adjacent to the parking stalls that's from the access on Little Moro Creek? Is that whole area going to be gravelled? Or how's that going to be handled?
Right now, I believe just that the area where the parking spaces would be gravelled, and then the, and then the remaining of that parking area, that's PG&E, would be, remain as native dirt. Because this is PG&E-owned property, the applicant in their negotiations with PG&E is trying to keep it as temporary, but I think they may have more information, and when they speak during their presentation portion, they may be able to speak to that.
Because you have to get to those parking spaces somehow.
Right.
Okay, is, and on the trails, are they going to be using a binder, a binding agent? How long does that usually last, and will it be reapplied, or to keep the dust down?
They are proposing to use a binder, the length and which, and how often they would have re-applied. I would leave that to the applicant to answer, I'm sure, as needed, but I would let them answer that question.
And just another couple of questions that I guess probably be for them, is more, is there going to be any security lighting? I mean, there's, so vacant lot now, but, you know, this is an attraction.
There's no proposal to add lighting to the site.
Okay. And then what about restroom facilities? I don't see any porta potty locations or anything like that.
No, there's also no proposal for restroom facilities. It's just go there, enjoy your bike recreation, and then leave when you need to.
Yeah, okay. There isn't anything close by there that would be accessible to the public? Okay, thank you.
Other than I really, really like the design, I'll wait until public to mention more.
I guess I'll ask, but maybe it's better for the applicant. If you, can you put one of those, any of the image, that's a perfect one. My understanding about grading things like that, I know they're going to be really different, but, you know, most mounding takes at least a 12 to 12 pitch, if not a 24 to 12 pitch. So my sense is, these things are very informative as to the path of the bikes, but they're not very informative as to what this really looks like. I think, my concern is, what I initially was most concerned about is the sort of quarter pipe at the downhill along Main Street facing Route 1. I can't imagine is a mound. And so I do think it was intended as a structure. If it's not a structure, it shouldn't be shown the way it's shown, because I was concerned of what does one see going up scenic route 1. And so I'm just a little concerned that when you say there's no structures, this, I don't think is going to look anything like we're seeing here, but maybe I'll wait for more questions with the applicant.
Yeah, I just had one question at this time, and that is, what's the purpose of this fence? Is it sand retention, or, I'm not real clear on what the reason for the fence is.
What's been presented to city staff is that the purpose of the fence would be to, for a couple of reasons. One, to prevent bicyclists from taking lateral access onto neighboring private property. Two, it would prevent somewhat of a rudimentary safety feature in that if you go off the course, you're not going to, I mean, right. It's going to be a flexible fence design so that you're not hurt if you hit it, but then also it's going to give you that visual feedback that, to stay on the bike course. And then regarding sand control that you mentioned, that's never come up, so I'm not aware that that's intended as a purpose for the fence, and I have not seen that in the review of the previous council record or in discussions with the Recreation Department or the applicant.
One more question.
Sure.
In reading through it and in conversations, the city is going to be carrying the insurance on this, on the property. Will the applicant have additional insurance that would be hit first in case there was an accident, and then it would go to the city, or is city primary on the insurance?
So in reviewing the most recent MOU that went before council on January 13th, it doesn't mention anything about the applicant would be primary insurance. It does say that it would be the city's insurance. And then, of course, I don't know, I can't recall if I said this during the presentation, but as far as that PG&E-owned portion of property, that would be, PG&E has requested to be added as an additional insured to the applicant's insurance. So that portion would be applicant first. The city-owned portion would be city first, from my understanding.
On the PG&E portion, are they, is PG&E going to be indemnified in case there was some type of accident on their property?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I believe I have the draft PG&E agreement, so I can look that up. Or the applicant may know that also.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on to public comment, again, we will offer the opportunity for the applicant or their representative to speak first. Please step forward, give us your name, and speak to us.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Bonnie Johnson, and I'm the project manager for Moro Bay Bike Park. I started this project two years ago with the goal of giving kids and families in this community a safe and fun place to ride their bikes. I am here tonight to talk to you about the vision of the bike park and to answer any questions that you may have. Joining me tonight are members of the Sanloes Bike Club, CCCMB, Fasta, SRAM, Moro Bay Bikes, Moro Bay Citizens Bike Committee, which have all financially donated to the bike park, and a few of our 617 Facebook followers. As I mentioned earlier, my purpose in building the park is to give the kids and families of this community, as well as visitors of our city, a fun and safe place to ride their bikes and to be outside and bikes and to be outside and active. Nowadays, team sports are not for everyone and many kids spend too many, too much time inside with electronic devices. When there was a bike park in town in the early 2000s, it was well-used by friends and families. After that bike park was taken out, it left the kids in our community with no destination to ride. Let's give the kids and the families a destination back. It is our goal to design this bike park with the highest quality, standards, and safety. That is why I'm extremely fortunate to hire a builder that has an excellent background in bike park design and construction. Our builder, who is here this evening to answer any questions, has been involved with projects such as the Olympic Training Center, Sea Otter Classic, the X Games, and many other reputable bike parks across our country. Our bike park will be home to many different styles of riding and abilities for kids and families. During the past two years while working on this project, I've learned that many issues, that there are many issues to consider. Some of these issues are parking and traffic. In various research, I have found that bike parks similar in size in relation to the proposed bike park have on average about three cars and about seven riders at any one time. Even though there will be some visitors and tourists using the bike park, it will not be promoted as a tourist destination. Our project is only a half acre in size and not intended, and is only intended to give our community another option of something to do similar to that of Moro Bay Skate Park. With regards to traffic and our project, the intersection of Radcliffe and Maine has a pre-existing and lengthy history. The proposed bike park should not negatively impact that traffic issue. However, it is our goal to work with the city and the residents of the nearby neighborhood to help address their concerns and help in any way that we can. Within the last two years, our projects, as our projects started gaining momentum and making forward progress, I'm sorry, I'm not a public speaker. As we've started gaining momentum, the city has begun to make improvements in anticipation of our project. They have installed radar signs, as well as cleared the obstructing brush from the intersection of Radcliffe and Maine. The city is also considering additional improvements to help with the traffic and give the people a safe way to access the bike park. I thank you for your time and consideration in our project. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to address any of them.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, if it's okay with you, I'm going to let you sit down and let other people speak and then we'll maybe call you back for questions at the end.
Absolutely, thank you.
That'd be great. Any other persons who would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Lori French and we have a ranch pretty much on the end of Little Moro Creek Road. I drive that road every day, multiple times a day. For the last couple of years, there's been an informal bike park, which I'm thrilled. I see kids out there in the summer building their own little moguls and hills. And I happen to be one of those kids that we lived on a ranch. And my brothers and I spent a lot of time doing that. I don't know how many people here have that opportunity, but it's a good thing. It's constructive. As for traffic, I really can't see that much of an impact. I mean, the intersection is already hellish in the summer. That's just the way it is. It's been that way. Get over it, deal with it, move on. But this is giving kids an outlet, a good outlet. With a lot of the extracurricular activities at the high school and at the middle school being cut in budget cuts, we need as a community to provide our kids some sort of outlet. And I would much rather see those kids out in public, riding a bicycle, having fun. I don't care if they have shovels. Somebody else might, but I don't. I'd rather see the kids doing that out in the open versus in some back corner parking lot doing a drug deal. Anything to keep these kids going. And if we have adults there, that's even better because what, you know, what better way to build a family relationship? I honestly, again, cannot see that much traffic coming. And one benefit is if we get the bike park, then maybe I won't disappear into one of the chuck holes on Little Moro Creek Road on the city-owned portion before we get to the county portion, just saying. So please consider it, it's a good thing.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Davis and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Moro Bay Citizens Bike Committee. The committee wholeheartedly supports the Moro Bay BMX Bike Skills Park. And the primary reason is that it's going to provide a safe environment for young people to get out of the house and do something physical. And it gives them an opportunity to do things together with their families. I would like to point out that there is a lot of community support for the bike park. At the January council meeting where the MOU was approved, 21 people spoke in favor of the bike park and no one spoke in opposition. And that included a half dozen young people who waited more than two hours through other council business before they stood up and gave their testimony. I would like to recommend an additional safety enhancement for the bicyclists who enter the bike park from Main Street, who are coming southbound on Main Street and have to cross. If we could put in a crosswalk right there and maybe a couple of signs that warn bicycle crossing ahead. And what would be even better is if we could paint the crosswalk green to make it stand out and show people that this is a crossing area for bikes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Joe O'Donnell. I'm the president of the Central Coast County Mountain Bikers. And when I moved here in 1984, from what they say is the birthplace of mountain biking in Marin County, back then I could ride almost anywhere around here. When we were getting kicked out of Montana de Oros State Park, that's when we formed our group. We've been advocating for off-road cycling, bicycling for these years. Moro Bay, since they closed the park, really is in need of that. And I really hope you guys consider it very strongly. It's great for the kids and I wish you luck in the open space element. Moro Bay is a beautiful place and I know you guys are trying harder for that. And I hope more cycling opportunities are involved in that, too. Thank you.
You too.
Good evening. My name's Dave Aubrecht. I'm the bicycle advocate for the San Luis Obispo Bicycle Club and represent about 600 members of the club countywide. And what we stand for is the safe and legal bicycle riding for recreation and transportation. Last year, the Bike Club was presented kind of a conceptual plan for the bike park. And based on that plan, we donated $5,000 towards its construction. And really, the reason is because we were gratified that the park has actually come this far. And, but we bet on the park as an opportunity for kids in our county to have a place to ride. The club strongly believes in supporting active transportation projects such as multi-use paths and trails and green lanes and buffered bike lanes. But we also believe in recreational opportunities for persons of all ages and abilities. I can pretty much tell you, I'm not going to ride in that park, but my grandson might. And I would be one of the first ones to bring him to get a chance to start riding a bike in that park. So we think it'll provide an opportunity and a very safe location for off-road cycling. We think it will add to the development of skills that will encourage kids to ride their bikes for the rest of their lives. And so for those reasons, we encourage you to support and approve this park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Orion Solu. I'm 13 years old and I am here today with my helmet to show that I support the bike park and I'll be safe. Just as Bonnie said, there are way too many kids right now, like spending a lot of time inside and just like playing video games. And I think that the bike park is going to help those kids get outside and have their workout and the fun that they need. I also think the bike park will be a great idea because it'll help me and my friends practice for our bicy, for our cycling. And it'll be a great place to just hang out and have fun with all my friends. I really want the bike park to go up as soon as possible so that we can have our new spot just to like hang out and have fun. Because I know the old bike park I used to go to when I was really young, that got taken down. So I look back at that now, I don't really remember it, but that kind of bums me out. And I am, once again, I'm Orion Solu. I'm 13 years old and I support the bike park and I implore you to do the same.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Will King, resident San Luis Obispo, five years. And I'm here speaking on behalf of Fasta, Free Ride and Sustainable Trails Association, I think the fourth association that Bonnie has surrounded herself with. We are part of 3CMB but represent the younger crowd that is building the more styled trails like what you see in the plan. So firstly, the opportunity to everybody to stand up here that's supporting. I think if you're here to support, stand up. So you got a lot of people here and that was the same at the city council meeting. So I think that's a good representation of how Bonnie's surrounded herself with the right people to do the job. And the second thing I want to speak on is, so in September, I was involved in a motor vehicle accident while on my bicycle. What we've discussed about, David proposed a crosswalk and, you know, crossing, the southbound bike traffic crossing, it's real. I mean, I'd probably deal with the medical stuff from my bike accident for the rest of my life. So I'm 31 and what I've learned is, you know, it's making the right choices. You've got the right people here, I know that they're going to make the right choices. The suggestion I want to make is a perfect opportunity for the Slow County Bicycle Coalition to get involved. They do something called Safe Routes to School. It plans the safe routes for kids to ride their bikes to school. And this is, you know, not school, it's a bike park, but it's another good opportunity to do the same. That's something that can come with time, but it's another suggestion, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Aaron. I'm also a Fasta board member, along with Will. I'm a former founding executive director of the Bike Coalition also. I wanted to bring out one other thing that no one else has mentioned, and that is the economic benefits of this bike park. This will bring families to town. They will stay in the hotels, they will eat at your restaurants, and it will benefit the community in multiple ways. Vastly overlooked, but economic tourism, bicycle tourism is going to be one of the next big things. And from Cambria to Cayucus to San Luis, San Luis has the open space and the trails. And you can see it on the Facebook. If you talk to your tourism boards, they will tell you that the interest in cycling is huge. And this bike park will be a gem in the community. It'll bring you a lot of tourist business. It'll bring families here. Please don't overlook that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Coy. I'm a student from Quest College and I'm also a community organizer who is very much in support of this project. I started cycling in high school when I got involved with a high school mountain biking team. And I've benefited greatly from the cycling community and, you know, the health and psychological benefits that come from being around such active people. I'm also an example of the economic opportunity that is presenting itself with this bike park. Normally, I don't have too much of a reason to be in Moro Bay, but this bike park gives me an opportunity to spend time in this area of the county. And it will also give people in San Luis Obispo and Los Osos opportunity to spend time in Moro Bay and to buy tubes and chains and components from the local bike shops around town and to stock up on energy snacks in downtown. Yeah. So I'm very, very much in support of this project. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Charlie Clark and I'm nine years old. I'm Race BMX and I'm 19 and national and I really would like this bike park to be open because I go to Sanria every day and I would really like it to be open.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I, my name is Dan Lapp and I kind of wanted to just introduce myself to the group here that I own the property that's immediately to the north of the project, have Moro doors and that boatyard. And I've been there for 31 years now. And I spent a lot of time in that little field, walking my dogs and hitting golf balls, anyway. It's kind of a little favorite spot of mine. But I am pleased to see that there's not permanent structures. I wasn't sure. My concerns are restrooms. I just don't want to find a bunch of toilet paper out in all those bushes out there. It's not that huge of a lot. And I kind of, not real big on lighting at night. I don't, I kind of worry about people being, hanging out there at night. But other than that, I'm willing to be talked into it. I'm glad to see so many young kids wanting to do it and local kids. I think when you start talking about it as a tourist destination, I start worrying about the parking and where are people going to come and go. And mostly the bathrooms and trash are what concern me. My little fence is pretty porous and in the last 30 years, I've been relatively crime-free. And I'd kind of like to keep it that way. And so, anyway, my name's Dan Lapp and I, I'm willing to be talked into it. Thank you.
Good.
Good evening, Nancy Bass, Moro Bay. I was at the January council meeting when this was talked about. And many of the proponents that spoke were not from Moro Bay. Most of them were from around the county. And they talked about possibly having it becoming a venue for regional competitive events. And if we consider that sort of thing, I don't think five or six parking spaces will do it. And I'm wondering if there's anything about conducting such events in the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Grant Crowell, Moro Bay. Bonnie said that they were not going to advertise this as a tourist attraction. And then two other people got up and said, this is kind of a tourist attraction. So are they all on the same page? And if they are going to eventually do competitions, then how's that going to impact the houses around there? And so I would, I would recommend that if that becomes an issue, that there'd be street signs put, no parking allowed for, those kinds of things. Because I was just in a place the other day at a house up by Cal Poly campus. And as a visitor, I had to get a parking permit from the house to stay in front of their house. Now, that's a real burden for the owners of the homes and the visitors. But if they find that they have this situation, then they should put up signs that say, no bike parking. that they have this situation, then they should put up signs that say no bike parking. So if somebody is parking there that's not a visitor, they can just call and say, hey, somebody's parking here that's not a visitor, so that they don't always have to get visitor permission. Uh, my other big concern is the insurance, you know, there's gonna be an accident. Accidents happen every day, just go to the ER. Other than that, I think it's great to have a, it's great to have this kinda stuff for kids and families, I just have those few concerns, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pam Seines, you all have a letter from me because I'm not a public speaker. I feel strongly about this, I feel it's a worthwhile project, I think it's absolutely in the wrong location proposed. I think that, uh, there's a big risk for kids getting hit on Main Street, it's the only road between the two parts of Morro Bay that are not, that's not on the freeway. Slowing the cars down isn't gonna do any good. Exiting Radcliffe, when you look back to the left, you're looking beyond a forty-five degree angle, you're looking under an overpass, it's difficult, you're watching cars come from around a corner, from the left, around a corner from the right, and you're gonna put little kids on bicycles in the middle of that. They should have a place to play, they should have a place for a bike park, this is just not the right location for it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Carnegie and we have a home nearby, although we don't live in it, we live out of town, uh, down the road in Cayucas and we've experienced the same sort of thing with the Norma Rose Park that came up there. And it was a great idea and I think this is a wonderful idea that our children have a place to play and be outside, it's healthy and I support the project. Uh, I also support all the concerns that have been brought up and I think they do need to be looked into a little more in depth. And in my sixty-five years, I've always been told that nothing is put under the power pole lines and here I see this park being put under there. I have no idea if there's validity to the power lines, but I do think it's something that should be addressed and put to squelch if it's right, if it's wrong, to remove that issue completely. I also wonder about, um, in the forty-four years that I've seen that lot in Morro Bay, it has always been empty. I think the five-year plan is great, but in forty-four years, that lot hasn't been used at all and I would not like to see it continually be in place unless certain restrictions and regulations are put on to encourage and enforce safety for the children at all times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, my name's Neil Johnson and I live in the Harbor Track, uh, on Clarabelle to be specific, and my biggest concern is parking. Let's be honest, this is a BMX park, that means most of those bikes are gonna be brought in here either by their owners or by their parents or by their grandparents. It means that, uh, we're going to have a lot of vehicles transporting bikes that are gonna have to have a place to park. Six spots isn't gonna do it and I can already see Radcliffe being lined with automobiles and the lower streets being lined with automobiles, particularly if the BMX park does become a competitive venue and we really have to start to ask ourselves, where are we gonna put all these people, where we, where we put their vehicles? And that's my biggest concern, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ed Conde and I'm property owner in Morro Bay. I'm a registered professional engineer and I have a few, um, concerns when I look at this drawing. Soil will not sit at ninety degrees, it has an angular repose somewhere around, you know, thirty to forty-five degrees and so if it is all made out of soil, it's not gonna look like this at all. So I think there needs to be some thought put in and how are you gonna maintain this structure if there's not gonna be any permanent structure? The only way you can have a wall that's straight up and down with ninety degrees is wood or concrete and that's not temporary, so I have concern there. I also have concern about the visibility from Highway One and distraction that this may cause to drivers that might look for a sentient at somebody going into the air and then crashing on Highway One. So there, I think there should be some sort of visible barrier between the park and the highway, thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Mark Hutchinson, I am, uh, a resident of Morro Bay and I have a ten-year-old boy who, uh, like most, tries to stay inside, play video games and, um, we're constantly having to push him out the door, you know? And, uh, so it would be really, uh, a good thing for the kids because my neighbors complain of them playing in the front yard, you know, breaking fencing or whatever, just trying to enjoy themselves. The closest place they can go is Delmar Park, which he rides his bike every day to school and, um, it would be, uh, just a great venue for kids to be able to ride their bikes without having to, uh, ride on the highway. So, um, just, I'm in support of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, my name's Ian Ferguson, I'm from San Luis Obispo. Uh, I'd like to add my support to this as well, being one of those kids from, who grew up riding bikes and then later, uh, made bicycles my career. Um, I'd also like to say that I don't envy your position at all because you're never gonna be able to please everyone and, uh, I understand that it's always gonna be a matter of compromise between safety and regulation and giving people a place to recreate and all that and I think they, uh, the overwhelming support here is pretty clear that this is in high demand and, uh, I just wanted to encourage you to, uh, move forward with the project and, uh, make the necessary, um, motions for it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to, uh, come forward? Well, I wanna thank all of you who spoke tonight, I think we've had more public comment to, this evening than we have in the last year put together. Um, I do think we may have some questions, are there, are there any questions for, uh, Ms. Johnson, or would, would we like to ask, Ms. Johnson, or, could you? We're, we're, we're not, we're not gonna bite.
I don't have a speech, I'm much better when I don't have a speech to read.
So let's start, Michael, I, we've been starting at the other end, let's go off the other.
I, I guess, my biggest question is, um, how do you put the mounds up and demarcate the trail? Do you have flags or something? I know I see sometimes things like tires out, do, what's the demarcation? What's this really look like? Because I, I agree with the one speaker, I don't think we're gonna get grass to look like that, you don't have the clean, I think this thing actually, uh, looks a lot cooler than this, because it's, it's gonna be a continuous kinda rolling surface.
Correct.
So, so I don't understand how you demarcate the trails without putting things on there that indicate trails.
So, one of the ideas that we have is the flexible signage, the plastic flexible signage that you stick into the ground, it sticks up, I think, four feet up in the ground and you can put little tags or signs on it that you can say beginner track, intermediate track, expert track, that kind of a thing, flow path, whatever you want to mark it as. Um, that's the current plan, to, to be identifying each trail type.
And, and I know this is cut, more diagrammatic than actual, but, but some of those mounds look like they're three, four feet high.
Mm-hmm.
I'm imagining some young person can actually get some pretty good air off some of those things. They look like they're pretty close to the edge of the park. Are, are you concerned about the nature of this fence? Uh, when I, when I, I was thinking somebody gets hurt on the, on the fence from falling into it.
When building it, that will definitely be taken into consideration, we're not gonna build a, um, a jump right next to the fence where it's going to, I mean, all of those factors will be taken into consideration when building it, the fence will be a certain distance from the track.
Yeah, and then I guess the, the three kind of human things that I think about because my, my son was involved in a lot of skateboarding as he was growing up and you generate a lot of energy doing this. My recollection is there's almost no shade structures out there, so, so, so how does one rest after one's been doing this for a while?
Um, in the plans, there's, there's a couple transition points in the plans that, um, are made to go for transition from one track to another and so there will be a place there that you can stand and rest or whatever you feel you need to do, as well as there will be benches around the park that people can.
I guess I'm thinking more about like shade, that, that type of thing, you know, that's a concern, I, I mean, I'm not saying.
Yeah.
You have to, I'm just saying it's a concern of mine. And then what, what's your response to the concerns about the, about the toilet issue?
Um, as for shade, honestly, I never really thought about it because I'm always freezing cold in Morro Bay, so I just didn't really think about it. If there is any requirements that, you know, the city or the planning department want to put for shade, that could be part of the landscaping, that we could put up some shade trees, but again, I'm trying to keep with it being an interim five-year use, I don't wanna plant trees that five years down the road, I'm gonna get in trouble for taking them out. Um, I'm sorry, your other question?
The bathrooms?
The bathroom issue, it, we, I've had several meetings with the planning department where we've discussed it and not discussed it and it was just at, I think where we kinda left it off was that it wasn't a consideration at the time, it wasn't a requirement at the time that the city was going to require us to put, um, mobile toilets, you know, porta-potties, that, that didn't look like a great, you know, feature and it could potentially draw people there to sleep at night.
And, uh, the last thing I was, I was concerned about is the, the nature of the neighbors, I mean, the, what happens to the, between the tracks with things like dust and, and dirt? I mean, we have so much wind here, I mean, the, when I looked through it the first time, I thought, we'll never see that grass, what, what we'll, what we'll see is a lot of dirt and even with people leaving the track and kind of hanging around, be a lot of, is, is there, has there been any thinking about if, if that occurs, how that might get mitigated?
So, in between the track and in between all the courses, my vision was to do bark and native grasses that would keep consistent with the surrounding areas, I don't want to have the surrounding PG&E areas looking in their current state and then all of a sudden, you know, perfectly landscaped, you know, beautification, which is not a bad idea, but I wanna keep consistent. Um, for the tracks themselves, what we plan on doing is, is called, um, poly paving, it's what the airlines use to land the airplane, or the army uses to land the airplanes in the desert. It's basically super glue for dirt, it lasts up to three years, it's a spray-on, kinda like you would use to, uh, spray your weeds with Roundup. So you spray that on, give it some little bit of time to dry and then it holds for up to three years. Part of the purpose in doing it is so that people don't come and dig up the, the features and make them unsafe, as well as it would cut down on the maintenance and the dust considerably.
And then that area at the top, have you done any thinking about what the real capacity of vehicles up there is before you start impacting the road?
Oh, I've lost much sleep over that. Um, as I said in my earlier presentation, I've, my family are, we ride bikes, we travel all over the place and as I stated, the builder is here this evening, he builds bike parks all across the country, he goes all around the world doing this kind of thing and we've talked about this in length and what I, my vision and my anticipation is no more than like three cars at one given time during peak hours. It's a half acre, it's not built for large quantities of people, it doesn't have the size for large quantities of people and I want it to be for the community and I do understand that the community is concerned about it being a tourist attraction. As I stated, I'm not using it to draw tourists, but our city in itself draws tourists. You look online to rent a mobile home at one of the trailer parks and it lists all kind of amenities, the bike paths, the rock, restaurants, Cayucas, San Luis, Pismo Beach, I mean, this town draws tourists in itself, so I don't plan on drawing tourists. I hope that the bike park bring, gives people who are already coming to this town another item to do. Teenagers don't like to hang out with their families, families come here, the parents can then go walk on the Embarcadero and spend money, their kids can go to the bike park and it creates more cohesion with families.
And then that last feature that looked like a quarter pipe to me, that, that's just another mound, right?
It is conceptual and it is a transition point, there's actually one that's very similar in the new Lompoc Bike Park where it basically would be a wall, a wall ride that, it would be like a big berm that you can just ride over, but it's not like a great ba, it's not a structure.
Okay, that's all, thanks.
Yes, I, um, I, I really like the fact that you have three different levels and maybe if it'd be okay, could you have the builder just kinda describe?
Absolutely.
Yeah, describe like some of the features of the park.
This is Alex Fowler.
Hi, how are you guys today? My name is Alex Fowler, I own Action Sports Construction, I'll be building the Morro Bay Bike Park upon approval. Uh, so the three separate skill levels is similar to any mountain resort you go to when you go skiing, you always have the bunny run, blue diamond, black, or, you know, blue, I, I don't know all of them, but, but the different level, and so it's kinda the same thing, we're applying that to cycling. Um, the concept behind that is so that, you know, any child or adult can, with no cycling experience, can come and start on the beginner path and then incrementally work their way up to that expert level. Is there anything else that I can, oh, and pertaining to the, the ninety-degree, this is just conceptual, there'll be slant on the side, you don't want anyone falling off, there needs to be, you know, there, for erosion control, the sides of the features are slanted. We just don't know how to do that with, uh, the computer program.
Okay, that was my second question.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've answered it.
Yeah, no problem, anything else I can answer to you guys, let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I imagine one of the features and one of the, uh, the, um, reasons you chose this site is the vertical, um, the vertical grade and the vertical drop on it and, uh, have you, are there any other potential sites in Morro Bay that would have, um, an equivalent, uh, changing grade?
Two years ago when I started this project, I had come to the council, actually to the Recreation Parks Commission to ask them to support the idea, I went to the council and long story short, I looked at every possible privately and city-owned land in this town and I brought it back to council with three different options. One option being, um, in between the old Flippo's building and Motel Six and that's owned by Motel Six, I, um, sent them a letter asking permission to use that facility for a bike park. I asked permission of the Ogle family, um, at the entrance to the high school to see if that was, you know, if we could use that facility and then I looked at every possible city-owned vacant land and this is the land that the city council had given permission and had instructed to move forward with this project.
Okay. Um, do you have any, uh, you know, event planning? Uh, there's been, you know, questions about having, uh, whether you're gonna have competitions or events here, how are you gonna handle, are you going to have that or, or how would you handle traffic, um, especially the Radcliffe, um, uh, Main Street intersection?
If there was going to be an event at this facility, it would be a, more of a safety, um, riding course for X number of kids. for X number of kids, seven kids, that would have one instructor showing them how to properly maneuver these jumps and to use proper safety equipment. If we were going to have an event, that is something that we would come back to the appropriate department and discuss with. Again, this is a half-acre facility. You couldn't, we couldn't have an X Games type of an event at this facility.
The other thing I am, I am really concerned about, you know, the neighbor's property and especially about the toilet facilities. And it seems like at least to be able to, at least on weekends or on high, during the summer, that there should be some porta-potties there that maybe might be fenced or, you know, somewhat screened or something. Have you developed a relationship with the funding bodies that would be able to support that?
Not at this time. Because it wasn't an issue up until this time.
Did you have any intention to put any security light, lighting, even low voltage, you know?
No lighting.
Photoelectric, you know, just to kind of discourage nightly gatherings?
No, because that would go against the interim use permit being, you know, no permanent structures, no, you know, electrical features, things like that.
Okay, even like yard?
Yeah.
You know, yard post, you know, the little ones you get on minors or something?
That has not been discussed.
Okay. And then also, this dirt paving at the, to get to the parking spots, I'm really concerned as soon as you start running traffic over that soil, it aerates extremely quickly and it's going to be creating dust. Would you be, what'd you call it, polypro?
Poly paving.
Poly paving? Would you be poly paving that lot there or would you be using gravel on that?
With the approval from PG&E. PG&E's stance on it is that they want to keep it temporary as well. And so we have been in discussion with them of doing decomposed granite or a small gravel. Their concern also, as well as mine, is to not create more erosion or dust. So I am working with PG&E, but they have to go with their standards as well.
Okay. And then what do you have in place as far as maintenance for the, both the park and the adjacent, the parking area?
So in the last agreement that we made with the city council in January, it was for the maintenance and of the bike park. So in that agreement, we are to make weekly reports and submit them monthly to the Recreation Parks Department. And those parameters are being laid out. What constitutes the maintenance of it? Trash cleanup, the features are upkept and proper, and the landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. So there will be weekly reports submitted monthly to the Recreation Parks Department.
And I don't see any location for trash facilities or recycled facilities onsite. What, do you expect everybody to pack everything out?
So that was a discussion that Cindy and I just recently had because when we were going through the maintenance MOU with the city, it was not bred up at that time. But it is something that we are happy to consider.
Okay, thank you.
I know we're getting down to the fine detail. That's trash cans and such.
That's fine.
Good catch, the journey. My one concern, one question for you, and then I have a couple for Cindy later, would be, are you anticipate putting any bike racks up?
Yes.
So they're just, I didn't see any on the plans.
That was something, again, Cindy and I talked about just last week.
Okay. No other questions?
I just have a few. You'll have to bear with me. The last time I rode a bicycle, it had a real big wheel in the front and this little, small wheel in the back.
We'll make sure you're able to ride it too.
Did you have involvement with the previous bike park that we had here?
As a participant.
Pardon?
As a participant, but I was not involved in the construction or?
I was just kind of, I just kind of wanted to get your experience in terms of, do you recall about how many parking spaces were at that location or?
There was about four or five.
And how often were they full?
Never.
Okay. And again, just to get an idea of what group we're talking about, what group of people we're talking about. Do you have any idea of kind of what the typical age of people using the park is?
That's really tough to say. I mean, we went to the new Lompoc Bike Park about two weekends ago, and there was two-year-olds to 42-year-olds.
And I guess the other question I, I mean, sort of what I was getting at is that the younger kids, do they tend to be? I guess what age kids are typically going to the bike park under their own power as opposed to being with their parents?
I would say that's up to the discretion of the parents. I mean, there's a lot of people who let their kids ride their bikes from South Morro Bay to Delmar School, all going through that intersection at various ages. And so I, off the top of my head, if I had a good guess, I would say probably seven, eight years old.
Not two, I mean.
No.
And do you have any estimate, like this particular design, this particular park with the three different levels and the size that it is, do you have any idea of like how many riders this park can safely accommodate at one time without people running into each other?
I hate to give a guess on that. I would say, I would say Alex would be the better because he's been at more bike parks.
Okay, did you want to?
Hi, nice to see you guys. This sort of cycling, you're not actively participating the entire time that you're at the park. You're usually taking between a 30 and 60-second run. And then you're usually resting for three to four minutes between, between. And this is, that's very standard.
Okay.
And so really, everyone just kind of, similar to like a skate park, you know what I mean? And those are even more chaotic, you know? It's just one big area where everyone's just kind of free-for-all going out. And it's sort of the same thing. So you'll use one, one course and then rest and let other people use it and then go. So I'd say safely or comfortably, I guess you could say, 20 to 25 participants can just actively kind of hang out there and take turns. But it's, it's, so yeah, that's about it.
So do typically, and again, excuse my ignorance.
Of course.
Do typically more than, is there typically more than one rider on the course at a time? Or is it one rider goes through and then the next one starts and?
Between one and three.
Okay.
Okay, and that's per, that's per course.
Okay, good. Ms. Johnson, can you, I'd like to go back to something that Catherine brought up. Could you tell us a little bit about what your liability arrangement is going to be with PG&E?
With PG&E?
Uh huh.
So for the parking area?
Right.
The PG&E, one of the requirements in signing the agreement with them is that they have to be named as an insured on the liability policy that will be with Central Coast Concerned Mountain Bikers. Because the operation and maintenance MOU is with Central Coast Concerned Mountain Bikers, of which I am a board member of. And so Morro Bay Bike Park is a project of Central Coast Concerned Mountain Bikers, who is an organization through the International Mountain Biking Association. That's a nationwide association. So the insurance for the parking area will be insured through Central Coast Concerned Mountain Bikers.
And do you know what the limits of that policy are going to be?
I believe it is $1 million, but that's just for the parking area.
Right, right, I understand, yeah, I understand. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Here we go. This may be for combination between you and staff. If a pedestrian crossing is requested by the commission, who would pay for that? And could we put a pedestrian crossing at the entrance in the middle of Main Street there?
There's a lot more analysis that needs to go into when you're talking about that. You know, we'd have to have a traffic study, look at that, and whether that's a safe place to put one or not. A lot of the area that runs along in North Main Street right there is under the purview of Caltrans. So we wouldn't be able to, you know, put one in the area that's under their control without their approval. So there's a lot of work, there's a lot of moving parts involved with something along those lines.
It would seem like you would need to have warning, warning lights and little, you know, pavement crossing lights and everything to make it effective.
I don't even know that we could do it.
Yeah.
That would be the first question. Is it a possibility? And then what would entail, what would be entailed and what would be included in that would be sort of at the end. The question we have to be asked was whether it's a possibility or not.
And then the bike path that was marked on Main Street, which was a great improvement from what it was, do you believe that's adequate for the increased bike traffic?
Based on how they've described its function, I don't see why it wouldn't be.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
I guess this is more for staff. I know there's notations on the plans about the floodplain. We're not in a velocity area. We're sort of in a pooling area. We're assuming it's coming from the ocean rather than down through, like behind Lemos and places like that, or is it? So none of this changing of grades is going to necessarily cause any upstream impaction of, on the residential area or? I'm assuming it's coming from south toward the north, if there is any velocity.
We have the condition on the project that was placed there by engineering and cities had conversations specifically with the engineering division. I mean, do you want to add something to that?
Yeah, I think you're right in the assumption they will be required to get a floodplain development permit, I think it's called. It is in the floodplain. It's an engineering condition and, but I don't, I can't quite remember the exact way you worded your question.
Well, I'm just concerned with the residential neighborhood up there that would seem to be uphill. If this is impacting the free flow of the waters down toward the north, if that's the point of flow, I would just want to make sure at some point, we're doing due diligence about not creating a restriction of the flow of the water toward wherever it's going to get to the, it probably goes to, probably goes into the area that feeds into the parks down toward the sewer plant.
But one of the?
Behind La Casa.
One of the requirements of the floodplain permit is to show that you're not having negative impacts on the adjacent properties. You're not increasing the height of the flood levels in any given area. I mean, that's all that goes into the part of getting the permit. You have to justify all those things. And they do have a civil involved with the project, so it shouldn't be an issue.
I have one other question, I think, for staff. Has there been any discussion or any, you know, getting out the maps and looking to see if it's possible to construct a bike path that would join into Little Morro Creek Road rather than having, from the north, rather than having people come south on Main Street as the main bike route to get to this?
Do you mean a city bike path that would go across the city-owned property or some other path?
That would somehow, well, I don't know, I don't, I wouldn't know where it would go without, again, getting out a map. But looking to see if it's possible to bring bicyclists to Little Morro Creek Road from the north by some other route than Main Street. I mean?
I don't think we have that in any of our bicycle master plans. It's not an identified route that I'm aware of.
Yeah, there's?
Yeah, I mean, does that sound familiar to you?
No, there's no identification for new bike paths in that area. And certainly there wouldn't be space on the site plan without, you know, requiring, you know, elimination of one of the trails to provide, you know, access across.
Well, and that wouldn't help because they'd still have to come down Main Street and cross over to get to it, you know? But that's, I'm thinking of something that would parallel, parallel Main Street at some other, you know, I mean, realistically, some of those streets in North Morro Bay are really, really wide. You could put, you know, you could put three or four bike paths and not impact traffic.
Oh, so you're?
The issue would be getting from those streets to Little Morro Creek Road.
So you're talking about something like it's farther up here and then you connect in up there?
Right.
Yeah, I have not seen anything in any documents. That's something that would require some research to explore the feasibility. And certainly, you know, one thing just to point out, you know, as I mentioned, one of the conditions of approval is that we would present a staffer, we would present an evaluation to the planning commission within six months of permit approval. That would say, six months has gone by. This is what is actually happening. This is the parking demand. That could include, I mean, subject to whatever final conditions get imposed, but, you know, whether or not, you know, the issue with bicyclists, of course, that could, you know, that could be examined prior to permit approval too. That could also be included as a recommendation to the city council.
Right.
And that may be some kind of response be provided in the staff report prior to completion of that staff report before the meeting, certainly.
So, yeah, and just to, just to get our role clear here, assuming that the commission is in favor of this project in general, our role would really be to make recommendations to the council as to other issues that ought to be examined or other changes that we feel would be helpful, right?
Right, exactly. So it's very similar to any of the Embarcadero projects, for instance. You see it as concept. It goes to planning or city council for concept, comes back to you for precise. The difference with this is that because of the simplicity of the quotation marks, you know, simplicity of the project, you know, we are recommending for purposes to expedite. It's an interim use overlay that planning commission approved it as a combined concept-precise plan. That's what we did for the bridge project when the Morro Creek Bridge Project came forward. Planning commission only saw it once. They approved a use permit as a combined concept-precise plan. They made recommendations and then city council took it. And that would also, of course, be, you know, duly noticed public hearing as well.
So let's bring it back for discussion. Again, let's start off with Michael. We've been picking on you folks down here.
Well, I want to just applaud Ms. Johnson and the way she's constructed her argument here and put the coalition of people together to put this forward. As I said, you know, my son grew up on a skateboard, so if something like this had been around, I think he would have been on a bike too. But I do think it carries with it a trail of cultural issues, which I know young men will be crossing that road to use those bushes for a latrine. And I imagine that they will be eating whatever the candy de jour is of the time and drinking whatever is in the package that will be thrown on the ground. And so I do have concerns about the recommending that we come up with some kind of strategy, whether it's a gated set of porta-pots that don't leave at night or something. Or, you know, you see some of the, in the farm-working community, they've got some things on trailers that come and go. I mean, I don't know. But I think you have to address that because you can't have the residents and the businesses picking up the error of that calculation. And then I think the parking will show itself to be? And then, I, I, I think the parking will, will show itself to be an issue one way or the other, and I'm, I'm comfortable with going ahead that way now, the way it's shown. The, the fencing, I'll take into account the concerns that as it's built, it'll be done appropriately. I, I do think the fencing will be compromised. My sense is that people will take the shortest route and compromise the fence, but that's a, that's an issue to look at longer term. So, you know, I, I, that's my, my biggest concern. Kids are going to be hot, want to be someplace in the shade. I've, I've seen that in the skate culture for years. We don't have any trees there, except across the street. You know, the city put a tremendous amount of thought into the bike lanes that are there. You know, I live up in that section toward Delmar Park, and, and I'm always surprised how respectful it seems like people are with the bikes, and they seem to almost slow down when kids especially are out with the bikes. So, I, I'm relatively comfortable with this, aside from the, the trash and the, and the toilets, recommending it pretty much as it's been proposed.
I really, really like this project. I have a grandson that's kind of been waiting for this. He's seven years old. And you're right, like you said, Commissioner Lucas, it's a cultural thing. And I think it's, one of the things that I noticed, I, when going to, like, the Los Soso Skate Park with my grandkid, I was always impressed on the, the environment that the kids have there, the older kids to the younger kids being helpful if somebody got hurt, picked up. And I think that if we, as a, you know, you know, everybody involved here, all the kids here, just be respectful of the neighbor, be respectful of each other, and most importantly, with the traffic issue, I have, there's people that I have a lot of respect for that came up to me and are concerned about the traffic, and, and I think that, I have some experience in that. I had three paper routes in East LA when I was growing up. And the, the key is, is not getting hit by a car, and, and, but, also, not only scaring yourself, but don't, you know, don't scare Grammy with your tail whips coming home from, or coming from a, from a, from the pharmacy. You, you, you could do your, your stuff at the bike park, and that's, and that's what I think that we need to reiterate to the kids, you know, police yourselves, and, and, you know, be a, be a culture that is respectful of others as you get there. That's going to be the big thing, getting there safely. Have fun, and then, slow down, and be extra careful going back. And I think that, I think that this is an opportunity, and I like the five-year plan, you know? You could give, you know, show the community what the young people are, you know, that what, they could be a representation of what, what a good project this can be. And I, and I would recommend it as, as, as it's, as the staff did, and I want to thank staff. Lot of great work. Thank you very much. You could tell it's, a lot of energy went into this.
Yeah. I'd also like to commend the coalition that brought this forward. You know, these are the things that I think Moro Bay needs, you know, we need, we need places for the kids to cut loose a little bit with, you know, there's less and less of that in our society today, and, you know, maybe even some older folks, you know, you know, regressing a little bit. So, I'm, I'm really concerned about the, the impact on the neighboring, neighboring property owners, including PG&E, and also the commercial areas next to that, so, my, I think the biggest bailiwick's we have here right now, other than the, the traffic issue, which I don't think we can really solve, is that, you know, the dust control on the lot, as soon as, as soon as a couple cars go over that lot, it's going to tear up that soil, and we're going to have dust, and it's going to blow, and, and so, there needs to be some kind of a dust control on that, either gravel, or the, the chemical treatment, or DG, something that can be revert, that would revert back, but would, you know, would control the parking area, because cars are going to park all over that. It's just going to be, you know, it's basically going to, it's going to be able to handle 10, 15 cars on that lot, you know, and informal parking. So, there needs to be some dust control on that. Also, the, we, we do, I think you do need to have trash pickup, you do need to have some trash containers there, and recycling, and also, you know, porta potty situation that may be screened. And then, it probably, you know, maybe even look into, you know, some kind of a shade area in the future. I, I would not want to see that ruled out, because that would be, you know, it does get warm here, you know, once every two or three years, so, you know, especially if you're running up and down the slope. But, I see this as almost, you know, as far as the site is, you know, we don't have any, any appropriate sites like this that have a vertical, vertical variation that they can do this kind of a layout on. And, you know, as a longtime bicyclist, and one of the early members of slobs, the, that bike, the bike lane that is there is, is really, really helpful, and it does really help control the traffic, and, and I think that, that will be adequate, but there is always going to be accidents. So, you know, my, my conditions I'd like to see on this are, you know, are the dust control on the parking lot, porta potties, and, and trash, trash and recycle containers. And if there are events, I, you know, if there, if they, if this does progress to having events, or, or maybe some light-duty competitions that there, there's additional supervision on, on the, on the corner of Ratcliffe and Main, and, and I think that they should be required, if there are events, that they should be required to, to come before the plant, the, the staff, and have those reviewed, have their, their event plannings reviewed by this, by the staff before they have them. So, maybe, you know, anything over 20 people, 25 people, I don't know what the threshold should be, but I would, I would think staff would be able to work that out.
I agree with the other commissioners. I, I think this will be a wonderful project for Moro Bay, and the only other condition that I would add to it is just additional due diligence on a crosswalk. And if we can do it, if we can't do it, but I think it's important enough for the safety of the children, and, and, and for the people who are driving, too, you know, that there is an opportunity to slow down or stop. And, you know, it may not come to anything, but I'd really like it to go forward with that recommendation.
Chairperson Teft?
Excuse me? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to point out for the commission that there is a garbage and recycling condition currently proposed by staff. If you refer to Planning Commission, Planning Condition Number Three, as Bonnie mentioned in her question and answer with the commission, I did address with her the issue of trash, and then also bike rack parking. So, number three would require that a minimum of two trash recycles and two recep, recycling receptacles with a minimum 50-gallon capacity each be provided. If you look at the Bike Conduct Rule sign, what it currently says is pack it in, pack it out, and I question whether or not there would be strict adherence, adherence to that rule. So, that's what staff had recommended, so, with the final design and appearance of said containers be at the discretion of the Community Development Manager. So, that's number three. And then, Condition Number Six, and, and you don't see this on your plans, because, of course, this was crafted during the writing of the staff report and the, and the conditions. So, the, it's conditioned so that the plans would be revised to denote location of trash, recycling, and bike parking. So, bike, bike rack parking would be Condition Number Six. And also, that it be racks with a minimum capacity to hold at least eight bicycles. If the commission feels that's not adequate, or additional bike rack parking is desired, then I will await your direction on that.
I would agree with most of what's been said. I, I think, I, I think Commissioner Lourdes' points on dust control from the parking lot are well-taken. I think that, I think obviously restrooms are going to be important for this. I would, as a pediatrician, I would add that water and shade are important here. This is a, this is a setup for kids becoming dehydrated and/or developing heat fatigue. If it is, if it is infeasible for water to be available on-site, and I don't think running water would be available, I think it would have to be, you know, a swamp cooler or something like that. But if it's, if that's infeasible, I think at least there should be signage encouraging kids to bring bottled water, or the little containers that fit on their bike, because that, that will be an issue in the summertime. I, I would say, in terms of competitions, I would like to see a condition that simply says there won't be any competitions unless approved by the director. Then, you can work out the details of what needs to be done at the time. I would, I think it's important to clarify the, the city's position with regard to insurance for incidents that occur on the PG&E property. I think that's a gray area that we don't really know about, and if, if the city is not covered on our insurance policies, I think we should be named as a co-insured for CCC MB on their policy. I don't, I don't believe that the, I, I don't see this as being a significantly, a project that's going to significantly increase automobile traffic. You're talking five or six cars, that's like two, two more houses, you know, being built. I am much more concerned about the bicycle traffic and the safety of that, because when a bicycle and a car get into an altercation, the car pretty much always wins. So, I would, I would really like to see more thought given, particularly to how southbound bicycle traffic is going to get across Main Street. I think, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's solved at this point. I, I, it'd be great if everybody just being careful would take care of it, but, but people aren't always careful, you know? There's idiots driving cars, and there's idiots riding bikes sometimes, so, I think we have to make it, you know, we have to look at every possibility of, of making this safe for the kids. In terms, there was one speaker who mentioned distraction for motorists on Highway One. I'd just like to, I drove that and looked. I'd just like to point out that when you're going northbound on Highway One, which is the closest to the site, you can't see it. It's blocked, it's, it's blocked by lands, trees that are landscaping next to the freeway. When you're going southbound, you can see, you, you, the, the area is visible, but it's a long way off. So, I don't, I don't know that you're going to be, I don't know that motorists are going to even be able to make out what's going on over there, let alone get distracted. I do feel that the landscape plan is important. You know, I think that this is a partnership, the community is providing a lot, you know, in terms of the property and forgiving the, the development fees that would normally be charged, but I, I think that this needs to be a project that is attractive to the community. So, I would, you know, I, I don't know that it necessarily needs to blend in with the properties on either side, because they're not particularly attractive. But I, I, I do think that, I'd like to, I'd like to see landscaping that makes this an attractive part of the community, not, not, not necessarily minimizing it. So, those would be my comments, that, that I'd like to see sort of included in the discussion. We need to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 9-15, which includes the findings and conditions of approval.
Do we want to add specific conditions, or do we want to leave that to staff?
Well, I think, I think this is going forward to council. So, this, so this is, we've, we've made some suggestions, we've made some recommendations, and it might be reasonable simply to ask staff to put those together as our comments, and present them to council, and let them-
Certainly, yes. I, I've taken copious notes, I've gotten every single person's comments in bullet form, and I will present all of this information to the City Council-
And let them chew on it.
With great diligence, yes.
We'll also research into several of the items. We'll, we'll answer the question about the crosswalk, we'll answer the question about the insurance. So, that'll be part of the write-up that we do for the council at the direction of the Planning Commission. So, it'll be item by item by item, you know, related to the things that you pointed out this evening, and we'll have a discussion topic on each of those.
Right.
Okay?
And I, I think it's better to, it happens in a prepared, organized fashion than us trying to do it sitting here. So, do we have a motion?
Okay, I think I just found it.
I don't know.
It's on Exhibit A, Resolution Number PC 09-15, is that, is that the correct one?
Yeah.
And I could also put the recommendation on the screen, if, if that helps you as well.
Well, I, I just moved that we adopt-
Okay. Well, you make it.
You got it.
Can the chairman make?
Okay, I'll move that the Planning Commission adopt Planning Commission Resolution 09-15, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for the projects depicted on site development plans dated January 14th, 2015.
And I'll second.
Can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Sorensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Lour?
Aye.
Com, Commissioner Sodowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Chairperson Teft?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, it's now 10 to 9. Can I propose that we take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 9 o'clock? Good evening. We are back and feeling greatly refreshed. So, we're moving on to Agenda Item Number B3. This is an appeal of a denial of an administrative coastal development permit, CP 0-450, concerning a property at 2740 Elm Street, and I believe that Joan is going to tell us all about this.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner, and, and good evening, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. So, as Commissioner Teft said, this is an appeal of a denial of a coastal development permit, CP 0450, at 2740 Elm Street. The applicant requested a rear garage entry setback of 15 feet, where five feet was required, and the permit was denied in December, and an appeal was filed by the applicant on February 2nd. The property is a through lot located on Elm Street with the rear property line along fur. It's located in an R1 residence- This is the proposed site plan, and you can see the, the garage is on the upper, upper right-hand corner of that site plan, and you can see how close it is to the, the property line there. These are the proposed front and rear elevations, side elevations showing the single-story secondary dwelling unit, and of course, the, the new proposed single-family home. So this is the neighbor directly to the south with an exist, it was built before the city was incorporated, and it was built with a five-foot setback. And then this is the home directly to the north. Now, this one's interesting because this one was approved, they only needed a building permit, they didn't have to get planning permit approval, and they built the, the home with, with a five-foot setback. Then this home, which is two doors to the north from the proposed project, went to Planning Commission and got a conditional use permit and a variance for a 10-foot rear garage entry setback. And at that time, there was discussion at that meeting about the residence next door or in between the, the project and the one I'm speaking of, and how this created a non-conforming structure due to the, the five-foot rear garage entry setback. And this is a good example. This is, you can see the existing unit or the existing home vaguely off the corner of the, that image, but if I can point with my laser, no such luck, you can see that, that truck is parked, this is, this is an address on Fir, Fir with the rear entry on Elm Street with a five-foot setback, and you can see that car hanging out into the, into the, the street. So not only into the public right-of-way, but into the actual roadway, which definitely creates a, a safety issue. So staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the director's denial of administrative coastal development permit number CP 0450 by adopting Resolution Number 10-15. And I will be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Joan. Questions?
The, this neighborhood has a mixed bag of setbacks and garage entrances and, you know, assorted, assorted structures. Is, where are we going with this neighborhood? What are we trying to do here?
I, I don't know, other than to say that, yes, there are a lot of different configurations on lots that exist in the, in this neighborhood. And then you have these through-type of streets, you get kind of unique circumstances, and you saw where one of the neighboring houses was, you know, got approved at a five-foot setback, and it was, didn't go through any planning process. Unsure why, but that was the case. And then you had an adjacent house to that get a, you know, a reduced setback, use, trying to use that as justification. Now, I don't know that you should be using things that get built inconsistent with the code as justification for a variance. That seems like a bad practice to me, and not one I would recommend the, the commission take up, but it seems like that's what happened there. And that is the reason sort of behind our recommendation for denial of the proposed setback because, one, it's not accompanied by a variance request, and, two, there's not really much justification, you know, to have a reduced setback without, you know, with a variance, even with one, even with a variance, I'm sorry. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, so that sort of dovetails into my question, which is that if we were to choose not to go with staff recommendation and to approve this project, it would require a variance, right? Because it's...
You are correct.
Okay. Thank you. So seeing no other questions from council, we'll open this up to public comment. If the applicant or his representative would like to speak first, that would be great.
That would be me again. Hi, I'm Kathleen Fergansel, and the reason we came to you is because of the garage. It's the main reason. The, we're required to have a two-car garage. There is no other place on the site to put the two-car garage. That's why it's where it is, on the back. We would have to tear down the front house, which they don't want to do, they want to keep it, and they want to build, tear down the back house and put a two-story residence for themselves, Sonia and Ed Jeffers. And to do that, they actually have to have the two-car garage. So I'm assuming that we'd have to get a variance, wouldn't we? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? If you'd like to...
Well, well, oh, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sonia Jeffers. I've been coming here to Morro Bay for the past 40 years when my kids were little, and now my kids are gone, they have their own family. We would like to retire, we want to retire here. You know, we have a lot of good memories about when the kids were growing up, we used to come here for vacation. So that's the reason why we would love to move over here.
Good.
Any questions?
Thank you. We'll, we'll hear, we'll take all the public comment first, and then if there's questions, we'll, we'll ask for that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Any, any other comments?
My name is Dorothy Cutter, and I would urge you to start thinking this way. Just because a neighborhood had bad planning, too much tandem parking, incorrect setbacks, oh, well, let them do it too. Maybe it's time to bite the bullet and say, no, we're not going to stop that, we're going to start moving in a more positive direction and have better neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Grant Crowell, Morro Bay. We already know that neighborhood compatibility is a big issue right now. It's been this way for a long time, and so we really ask that you all pay attention to neighborhood compatibility and make the rules happen. If there needs to be a variance, then you need to follow all the footsteps, but I would just ask, put it on hold and let it go to council and find out what happens with the whole idea of neighborhood compatibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are there any questions for the applicant? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Ed Jeffers. I'm the owner of the property that they're talking about. I think the pictures that they, they had of the property of the house two doors away when the car was sticking out in the driveway, I don't think that's indicative of the actual street. For the most part, there's very few cars in the street, and I've been going up there for 40 years, and I haven't seen a car protruding into the driveway that was represented in the picture. Also, on the two houses going on the south side of me, one was just recently remodeled and it was vacant for about seven or eight years. And the house next to that, I've been in the neighborhood for 30 years, and it's, it's been vacant for that long, so it looks a little bit on the rough side. So I think me spending some, improve, I think rebuilding that particular area would re, would improve the, the area and the neighborhood. And also with the parking, we've got tandem parking in front of the, I mean, I'm getting the, building a two-car garage that's necessary to park the cars, and in the front of it, there's tandem parking for two, for two cars in front of it, so I can fit four or five cars in the property right now without a problem. And there doesn't seem to be a problem with parking on the street. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Then we'll bring it back to council and talk it over. Richard, why don't you start us out? Haven't picked on you.
Thank you. I, I took a look at this project a couple times. I did it even today in the rain to just, just take a look at the drainage issues, and I, I feel that the community, it's, it's difficult because I, I feel what you're, what you're saying, it's important, you know, with the, with building a house and a two-car garage and all the requirements that we have, but I feel that having this garage setback, I, I just can't, I, I, I think that's problematic, and I think we need to address that issue. And we, we, we have to start doing that in, you know, just to clean across the board. So I'm kind of leaning, I'll listen, I want to listen to more discussion, but I'm kind of leaning in the direction to agree with staff on this one.
Well, I'll, I'll disagree with my, my, my citizen colleagues out there. I, I think the neighborhood compatibility would be to, to approve the appeal, but I want to stand on the, on the code, which if I was to buy a residence in this neighborhood, I would expect the city to go by the code, which is the 15-foot setback. So I think in this case, the code's actually protecting the community, and it would, it would be wrong to, to go the other way. I, I also don't understand why with the nature of the way the two dwellings were there, one could easily imagine the front being the part that became two stories and the rear remaining the, the other unit, and getting the driveway depth adequately taken care of off of the other street. So I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing a rationale for supporting the appeal. I'm tending to think, to go along with staff.
Here?
If, this question for staff. If they came before us with a, with a request for a variance to, to allow this garage, could there be findings made for that?
No.
Good. That answers my questions, Ed.
I agree with both of the fellow commissioners on this one. As much as I'd like to, you know, go forward with a project to, for your retirement and for your home, I, I do not believe it's in the best, I just, you know, I think we have to hold up the code and support our, the staff on this one.
Yeah, I think this, this would really be, I mean, this would be a major deviation from code. It would require a variance, which is a pretty high-level undertaking, and I, I would agree with staff that it would be very difficult to find, to, to come up with findings that would, that would justify that. You know, I, it's, it's unfortunate. I mean, I, I think that, I think that there have been some decisions made in the past that are somewhat difficult to understand, and I can't explain that. But I, I think this commission has to act as it feels the code requires it to, and I don't think I can support the, the appeal either. So do we have a motion?
Okay. I'll attempt this, I'll, to, I move that we adopt the Resolution Number PC 10-15 and deny the appeal.
Second. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Sorensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Luer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sodowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
And Chair Teft?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the motion passes unanimously, and we'll move on to Agenda Item Number B4, which, which is a, an appeal of it, of an administrative coastal development permit which was issued, number CPO, CP 0-448 concerning development at 845 Ridgeway here in Morro Bay, and I believe that Joan is going to talk to us about that one, too. We're keeping you out late.
Thank you, sir. The last item before you this evening is an appeal of an administrative coastal development permit for the demolition and subsequent reconstruction of a single-family residence at 845 Ridgeway. The permit was issued on February the 24th, and an appeal was received by the city on that same day. The appellant's are Kenneth Blackwell and Lisa Wyler, I believe the next-door neighbors to the applicant's Helen Torino and Eric Salem. I would just like for clarification's sake to make a few points for the benefit of the public. It's important to note that an administrative coastal development permit is, the director is authorized to deny, approve, or conditionally approve the project pursuant to Section 17.58.040. Second, the functions and duties of the Planning Commission are to uphold or deny the appeal, remand the project back to staff for re-review, or continue to a date certain and provide direction to staff. And then, third, the zoning ordinance is the implementation tool that's created to address the issues and policies that have been identified in the general plan and the local coastal plan. So moving on, this is the zoning map. The property is located near the corner of Ridgeway and Fresno within the R1 single-family residential zoning district, and as such is subject to the development standards defined in Municipal Code Section 17.24.040. The parcel is surrounded by other single-family homes in the immediate vicinity ranging in size from approximately 1,500 to 4,000 square feet. The proposed project is consistent with the current requirements set forth in the Morro Bay Municipal Code, meeting or exceeding all development standards. The proposal includes the demolition of an existing 1,258-square-foot single-family residence and the subsequent construction of a 2,467-square-foot single-family residence with a two-car garage on an approximately 9,000-square-foot lot. The appeal received included five appeal issues based on view protection and neighborhood compatibility. The appeal issues in summary include private view protection, privacy concerns, and bulk scope and scale issues. Staff... direction to staff. And then, third, the zoning ordinance is the implementation tool that's created to address the issues and policies that have been identified in the general plan and the local coastal plan. So moving on, this is the zoning map. The property is located near the corner of Ridgeway and Fresno within the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District, and as such is subject to the development standards defined in Municipal Code Section 17.24.040. The parcel is surrounded by other single-family homes in the immediate vicinity ranging in size from approximately 1,500 to 4,000 square feet. The proposed project is consistent with the current requirements set forth in the Morro Bay Municipal Code, meeting or exceeding all development standards. The proposal includes the demolition of an existing 1,258-square-foot single-family residence and the subsequent construction of a 2,467-square-foot single-family residence with a two-car garage on an approximately 9,000-square-foot lot. The appeal received included five appeal issues based on view protection and neighborhood compatibility. The appeal issues in summary include private view protection, privacy concerns, and bulk scope and scale issues. Staff has provided further detailed responses to each of these issues in the staff report. I'd like to just quickly go over how the project meets or exceeds the zoning standards. You know, front setback is twenty feet. It was very, very slightly non-conforming to begin with. However, they are meeting that requirement. The side setback requirements are five feet. On the appellant's side of the project, on their side yard, I believe the setback is 12.25 feet. And on the western side yard, the setback is 10.92 feet, again, where five feet is required. The rear setback is ten-foot, and they, the proposed development is forty-six feet off the rear property line. Height, lot coverage, maximum lot coverage in this zone is forty-five percent. The project proposal is twenty-three, they're proposing twenty-three percent lot coverage. This is the existing structure as seen from the front elevation along Ridgeway Street. In the top photo, note the appellant's home is to the right, and in the bottom photo, you can very slightly see the dome of the rock right behind those adjacent to, the neighboring two structures are also two stories. This is the existing structure as seen, this is the back of the house, to give you an idea of where the Blackwells' home sits in relation to the existing proposed home. This is the existing site plan. You can see Ridgeway Street to the south of the parcel on the right-hand side, and the Blackwells' home is the neighboring home at the top of your screen. And this is the proposed site plan. You can see the difference between the sixteen percent lot coverage and twenty-three percent lot coverage. It's also important to note that that extension in the rear of the project is the master bedroom, and that is, you'll see in the elevations, that's proposed to be one story. I enhanced the lines on the previous slide just so that you can see where the setbacks are in relation to, where the house sits, or the proposed project sits in relation to the setback requirements. This is the front and rear elevations of the house, showing, you know, articulation in the design. And again, in the rear elevation, you can see that single-story master bedroom suite in the rear of the project. These are the side elevations. The one on your right is the view as seen from the appellant's property. This is a visual rendering of the proposed project as provided by the architect. Again, showing various articulation that helped to reduce the bulk and scope and scale of the project. Again, the visual rendering from the appellant's property. Visual simulation of what it will look like on the site. This item was noticed as required in the San Luis Obispo Tribune newspaper on the 27th of March, and the property owners and occupants of record within three hundred feet were duly noticed and invited to attend this meetings, this evening's meeting. It's staff's recommendation that the planning commission deny the appeal and uphold the director approval of the administrative coastal development permits, number CP0448, subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained in Resolution Number 11-15. And I thank you for your attention, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Richard? I would like to state, I drove by this residence earlier today, and the Kenneth Blackwell's residence, he was there, and I was able to talk, I talked to him today, just so, I just wanted to, I had to ex parte.
Yeah, I would like to, similar to just close out that I met with the appellant and viewed the project.
As did I.
I spoke with the appellant on the phone.
I'd like to note that I spoke with the appellant on the phone, and also did visit, did just a little tour. I did not speak to anyone on site, other than I ran into Jerry.
Okay.
Chair Teft, if you have a moment? Just as a point of clarification, thank you so much for your disclosures, and just to clarify for the record, you will not be relying on anything that you personally observed outside of this forum unless you disclose it here. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing from you? In other words, you won't be getting information outside of this particular hearing and relying on it tonight in your decision. You're only going to be relying on items that you announced what you saw out there and then made it available to the public so the public could comment it, and you're not getting any sort of private information as a result of this. Is that correct? Thank you.
Should, for clarification then, should we disclose, you know, what we saw or what our impressions were, or can that be part of our discussion?
You can do it as part of your discussion. For example, if you're using it to rely on something as part of your decision this evening, I recommend you disclose what you're relying on, what you observed when you observed it, or what information you received, and make that disclosure before public testimony so the public will have an opportunity to comment on what you observed or saw.
Okay. Then I, you know, I viewed the, you know, I toured the property, I toured it from their, through their home, and saw the spatial arrangements through their property, and so that's for the public knowledge.
So just to clarify, if there's something that you saw that has not been presented as part of the staff report or in the pictures presented by staff that you tend to rely on or intend to maybe influence your decision, that sort of thing should be disclosed. But if it's already in the record, you're fine.
On that note, I went into the house, that's the appellant's house, and I saw the view from their living room of the rock from what, and the project is in front of that. Okay.
And I would like to report that I saw the same perspective. Whether I will rely on that tonight or not, I couldn't say. Okay, so any further questions for staff? So we'll open this up to public comment then, and I think typically we'll hear first from the applicant or applicant's representative, and then, and the appellant, we'll hear, okay, we'll hear first from the appellant, and then we'll hear from the applicant and then the public.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you all. I'm Kenny Blackwell from 411 Fresno in Morro Heights. I have some handout sheets that I'd like to maybe give you now if I could, if that's all right, that's just information. Would that be all right?
Is this, let me ask, is this, again, this is not available to the public, so is this something we can do?
Yes, it can be provided to the commission. I would suggest that it be made available to the public if somebody wanted to review it, maybe even put on the Elmo, I believe, which is over here for the overhead projector for those who are not at this hearing. But as long as there's an opportunity for the public to review the information, even if it requires a two- or three-minute recess, that makes it publicly available.
Okay.
Is that all right?
And do you have any extra copies that maybe you could provide to staff or the public?
I have five copies.
Okay. Then I suggest we put one on the overhead, and we'll share one copy.
Okay, all right. Let me give you, do you need this, or do you have?
We can, and actually.
I recognize him.
If you guys can share one, then we'll have, let's make this one available to any member of the public that would like to look at it.
Okay, so basically what you have is a copy of our petition that we had signed by residents of Morro Bay. We've got, what was the other thing there? We have a Realtor's assessment of different type of property values based on views, type, different types of views of the rock and the ocean. And the third thing was, what is the third item? Okay. Third item is a printout from the general plan.
That's the petition.
Yeah. And if I could also state that we probably have lost, due to the late hour, we've probably lost about fifteen of our supporters, some of which wanted to stay and wanted to speak, but it was just too late for them. And this is my wife, Lisa.
Commissioners, my name is Dr. Lisa Wheeler. I live at 411 Fresno Avenue. I am one of the senior radiologists at San Luis Diagnostic Center in practice there for close to fifteen years. The owners of 845 Ridgeway initially told us, this is to quote them, that they wanted to start off on the right foot and to be good neighbors. We replied that their project would completely block our views of Morro Rock and the ocean, views that had existed for sixty-three years. Even though they had been working with their architect for a year and a half, and though their side walls and windows would be directly across from our view windows, they are not willing to modify their design. All of our suggestions as to a compromise which would allow each of us to share our existing views were ultimately dismissed by the Salins. These suggestions included building a mirror image of exactly the same plan, just flipping it, and/or lowering the height of the portion of their home that would obstruct our views. In December, we invited the Salins to visit our home and see firsthand the views that their project would block. In response, Eric Salin wrote, "Thank you for your invitation to visit, but we don't see the point." And their architect also suggested that it might be time for us to build up. We're well aware that the proposed plans meet all of the statutory requirements, and that the bulk and scope and scale are not in violation, but positioning is the issue here. It's just not right to do that to your neighbors. We feel that design guidelines should be a vital part of neighborhood compatibility, and that these guidelines should include view sharing. There must be a mechanism to incorporate view sharing into compatibility. The views and rural character are parts of the definition of our neighborhood. We have a hard time understanding how a home on the real estate market can be boldly proclaimed as having fantastic views of the rock, ocean, and back bay, and priced accordingly, while at the same time, there seems to be a mindset among some that if you lose your views, that's just the way it is. A review, and this is one of the handouts, a review from a local real estate agent, twenty-six years in the area, shows the differences in value of a home with no view, a home with a partial view, and a home with a full view of the rock, ocean, et cetera. We stand to lose approximately $150,000 in our home value due to their actions. We would, our home would become just another house on any other street, on any street. We don't sense a compassionate, good neighbor aspect in the proposed construction, nor do we expect to retain 100% of the spectacular views that this home has enjoyed since 1952. We do expect that a view shed review process be a part of neighborhood compatibility. That means preserving the existing scope and character of established, single-family neighborhoods. It means protecting views and aesthetics and monetary property values in a way that is compatible with reasonable development.
And I'd like to address each individual point of our appeal in the same order that they were submitted, and in the interest of accuracy, I'm just going to read my statement, and not from memory. Item number one is the public views, and we believe that the staff report that we received via email is incorrect in stating that we are in Area 7, which is central Morro Bay, defined as Highway 1 in the downtown. Our neighborhood is in Area 4, Morro Highlands, comprised of Morro Heights and the adjacent hills. So this distinction is important because there are references to views, there are references to visual resources, reference to spectacular views of the bay, sea, and rock as a defining characteristic of this neighborhood. The staff report also says, "It is unclear how the proposed new home at 845 Ridgeway would block an area of 135 feet when the depth is only 51 feet." We weren't actually referring to the dimensions of their proposed project when we made that observation. We were referring to public views of the rock as they're descending in a westward fashion down Ridgeway, and this section would be about 10 feet north of the driveway at 850 Ridgeway, just on the far, the east side of the intersection, down to where the intersection of Fresno Avenue is. And we have a couple photos to demonstrate that. You've got some people walking down Ridgeway, heading west, and then this would sort of be their, what it would look like as they're walking down, entering the intersection of Fresno Avenue. And you can see that there is, there is view of the rock on the right side over there, exactly where the two-story would be proposed. And that brings us to the next item, which is item number two, concerning neighborhood compatibility. Staff report claims that there are no design themes adopted for this area, and Morro Bay, as we know, as we all know, is in the process of developing new design guidelines, which we are calling neighborhood compatibility guidelines. Doesn't seem like you can have one without the other. We've found that the names are kind of used interchangeably in other cities as well. So there may not be a design theme for this area, but this particular neighborhood actually has a theme, and it's defined in that local coastal plan definition for Area 4, Morro Highland. And I think we have a little section highlighted there. I'll read a part of that. Number four, Section A, describes mature Monterey pines are interspersed among residences, some of which have been designed to take advantage of the trees and serve to frame views and create pleasant settings for homes. And then in B, I believe it is, "Those portions of hillsides in the city that are already developed provide spectacular views of the sea, bay, and rock, as well as urban areas to the residents of these areas." So that is the current theme for our neighborhood under the LCP and the general plan. Can't really get away from that. So now, we'll show an LCP map. Okay, it's already up. Great. Figure 30, it's a map of scenic views. So the intersection of Kern and Ridgeway is designated on the map as an area known for providing an angle of view. The majority of public view from this area is of the sea, back bay, and the spit, but there is also small peak of the rock in that block. Privacy is the next reason we oppose this project. Salins will have a wall facing us that is approximately 14 feet from our living, dining, and kitchen windows, where we do currently have our views. They feel that this should be allowed because they could be even closer under setback requirements, we know that, but we don't think that's the point. requirements, we know that, but we don't think that's the point. The bulk of our windows and our light comes from those large picture windows on the west side of our house, facing the ocean. When these houses were built, our home was set back from the assailants, so that each house had western views without infringing on other people's privacy. And now, their proposed east-facing wall has several windows that look directly into our view windows, which we have two of. Instead of seeing the beautiful rock and the ocean, we'll be watching them or having to keep our blinds drawn or curtains drawn. Also, we, you know, we've already talked to three solar companies about eventually installing solar. We don't know what impact that'll have, but the height of the project will be above the cable lines that run across their backyard. And that's the, that's only the one-story element. The rear master bedroom section is a one-story, but it will retain the original height of the existing structure as it stands. And then the two-story element will actually block even more of our light. Item three, I'm almost done. View protection. And we have, okay, there's a, there's a photo from our most northern view window of the two. Basically, you can see the assailant's backyard as it exists now, the view we have as it exists now. And once that master bedroom is put into place as proposed, we are going to lose that. It'll extend above the electric wire that you can kind of see right above the rock itself, and it'll stretch beyond the view of the rock to the right. So kind of in closing here, neighborhood compatibility means much more than meeting the laws that govern height and setback. Allowing this project as is proposed will destroy our private view. We don't have a view shed ordinance, we know that, that specifically protects private views. Instead, we have a general compatibility provision that mandates that we honor the character of the neighborhood. That means respecting your neighbor's privacy and their views. It also means not allowing landscape that destroys views. It means architectural design that consider the quality of life of the people around you. It's not just following the setbacks and height restrictions. So in our opinion, view sharing is a concept that has a place in neighborhood compatibility. The issue has been raised before, but it hasn't been raised in the proper context. Until the planning commission and city council takes steps to address it, it will continue to be raised again and again. So now is the time to include private view as a valuable economic part of the neighborhood. Not view-taking, but view-sharing. We have to consider the long-term effects of our permits. We have maybe a couple more photos, not necessary? Okay, okay. I've got one more minute. Is that, we okay?
We're fairly liberal.
Okay. Don't say that. Okay. So we just, yeah, we have a few extra pictures that just show you the existing, the character of the neighborhood, the flow of the, the continuing flow of the roof lines. It gives a really unifying look to this particular intersection and the blocks around it. That's one of the things that makes it so unique. Even if you have a split level or a two-story that's somewhere in there, it's down the slope, you don't even perceive it as a two-story. It all has a unifying aspect to it. And in closing, this project doubles the size of the current structure. We know it's not overly large. The LCP states, "The current allowable height and bulk for residential development is not appropriate for some portions of the community. Such buildings would, in many cases, block important views and conflict with the character of individual neighborhoods." The LCP recognizes that private views are an important element of neighborhood character. As the planning commission, you've made hard decisions about bulk size and scale, and now you need to make a hard decision about view sharing, and you have the tools that you need right in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll...
I wish you'd leave that last one up. My name's Natalia Merzoyan, and I'm interested in this because I live on the other side of the proposed house.
I'm sorry, do we, do we have the applicant or the applicant's representative present? Let's hear from them, and then everybody will get a chance to speak, but let's do it in order. No, it's, it's, it's fine, just, it's, it's fine, just...
I apologize for my voice. My name is Eric Soling. My wife and I are moving here to make our permanent and only home, and we want to retire here. First of all, if you read the document, I'd like to handle a concern. I'm not an Adian from Vermont. In fact, I'm a native Californian. I was born in San Francisco, and lived in California until I went into the Marine Corps at age 22. My sister lives here in Morro Bay, my mother lives in Paso. I'd like to address some of Mr. Blackwell's statements. We first had a conversation in August or September of last year when he saw our plans. At the time, he was primarily concerned about the loss of his view of Morro Rock from his living room. He did not at any time in any of our conversations state any concern about impact on other neighbors or the neighborhood. Our architect also talked to him. That's Mr. Boudreaux who will talk next. The suggestions such as mirroring didn't make any sense, and as I said, Michael handled those. I might add that when we bought this house, we knew that a permit had been issued to the previous owners for a lot of, for a, on this lot for a 4,000-square-foot home. In fact, when Mr. Blackwell bought his home in 2008, he knew that too. And I have the email if you'd like to read it. As for disturbing the neighborhood view, I want to quote something he said to us in the same email of November 25. If you proceed with your present plan, the views of every home on this block will be maintained, except ours. So this is not about neighborhood views, this is about Mr. Blackwell's views. We have complied with all the city regulations. We've done everything the city asks of us. We've not only followed the regulations, we've followed the spirit of the guidelines. So if you decide to change these regulations, please don't do it retroactively. That'd be grossly unfair. And now, my architect.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'll just quickly go over...
I'm sorry, could we get your name?
Michael Boudreaux.
I'm sorry.
I'm an architect at San Luis Obispo. The staff pretty much covered everything really well. Our project does meet or exceed all guidelines, ordinances, and codes. With a 9,000-foot lot, we only have a 20, 23% lot coverage, and 45 is allowable. Our floor area ratio is 35%. Our setbacks on the side are more than double in the rear, triple. We have a 28-foot front yard, our garage setback. Our house is actually about three and a half lower, feet lower than the neighbor, and we, you know, we've done everything we can to respect the site on the slope. I did this with the dimensions. You can see that the floor of the home is at about 229, the garage is at about 226.5, so the site does step down. So our floor level is about three to three and a half feet lower than the neighbor. The site from the beginning to, or front to back, does slope about 10 feet. So some of the suggestions that were made by the neighbor included, and I'll address them because he mentioned them, was that we lower the floor of the master bedroom and include stairs to do that, and that would not make it accessible to go downstairs. We're trying to make it so that the floor is accessible to everyone. We talked about mirroring the project, but that would ignore the site slope. Right now, the way the, the way the site works, if you look at this, you see how the, and we're basically following the existing building, the, it makes a lot of sense to keep the garage low and not have to build up an artificial support. If we were to flip it, the house would be up in the air, and we would be digging into the site for the garage. So that wasn't very practical. And then I think the other suggestion was, oh, that we push the building closer to the front by reducing our little pop-out there, but we thought the articulation made the building a little more interesting and more compatible with the neighborhood. And also, the way, the way the stair works, it's a single shot up to the second floor, and then that allows us to put a chairlift into the stairwell, so for access again. I'll just quickly go through these. This is the, the design as it stands, and again, if we were to meet, I mean, look at how, we're hardly halfway back on the allowable area. If we were to make preserving the neighbor's view a priority, we would be limited to basically 40% of the front end of the lot. If we go to a single-story solution and get closer to the floor area ratio, that would pretty much block their view completely. Concerning the view, I did go down three different shots going down Ridgeway. Here's a simulation of our bill. You see the horizon in the green there? That's the before and after. The rock is still visible to some extent. Here is the view that Mr. Blackwell referred to that does show the ocean. And when you do basically about a, oh, I don't know, maybe a 120-degree rotation, you see the horizon in our, in our project there. And so when you take the whole thing into account, and you go back and forth, you know, our impact on this view is a pretty small percentage of the overall experience. And as we go further down the hill, the rock is not really visible at the intersection, and our project does block the rock, but it's, there's not much to block. Now here's where I'd like to point out, let's see, does this thing, you see, well, here's the, oh, there it is. Oops, sorry. You see how their window, the head of their window is there, and the head of our window here, that delineates the differential in the floor heights. So we're about, you know, we're about three, three and a half feet lower than them. So our building from their property only extends up about 19 feet. This is the view, again, describing the differential in the, in the site sloping from the front to the back. There's the master bedroom. We tried to make the windows that were adjacent to their, across from their view windows, high, and we can make them even higher if you like. I mean, that's not really a problem. This was more for ventilation. This area here is a bathroom, so that, those could be obscure glass. These windows up here could be made higher if that's, if that's what people want. Here's, you, I think you're familiar with the floor plans. Here's the straight shot stairwell that we're trying to incorporate. There's the bathroom to the side, the master bedroom, and again, all one level, all accessible. The second floor, there's the, you can see the installation of the lift is shown, all, and we've, these are the windows that we could, you know, if concerned, we could make them higher, if that's the city policy. And then lastly, these are the, you already have these drawings. I did want to show, there's their, pick the window of concern, and this is the view. Now I'd like you to take a look at this. You see that rock formation there? And if you were at the site, you probably, you might have noticed this. And so from their window, and notice the way this roof is here. Okay? So keep that in mind, this roof and the corner of the lot and their window edge. If I go back to the site plan... And draw a line, that's where the rock formation is. This is the roof that I referred to. We're not completely blocking their view. Their window is here. They're going to have a view all over here in this direction from this point here. And that's pretty much it. I mean, I can go into a whole bunch of detail, I can answer a bunch of questions, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll hold questions until after we've heard the rest of public...
Yeah, I would like to reserve a little bit of time to answer the public's questions too.
Okay. Now is the time for anyone else who would like to speak.
I'd love to have some of these pictures to refer to, because I certainly had some questions about the architect's rendering, especially of their front yard, which shows a contour. Should I introduce myself again?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Natalia Merzoyan.
Thank you.
And I've lived at my current location, which is next door to the proposed builder, for 37 years. I've lived in Morro Bay close to 50 years, and I'm, if it's significant, about my residence in California, I'm an eighth-generation Californian. My great-great-great-grandfather arrived here in 1769 with Father Sarah.
Oh, my goodness.
And I moved to Ridgway Street because of the character of the neighborhood and the fact that it was unique in having three houses, not counting the, the appellant's house, because he's actually on Fresno Street. But there are only three homes on my side of the street, and across the street, I think there's only two homes. So you don't find many blocks in Morro Bay like that, and it was an enclave of many, many pine trees. It was just, you know, a very different place from anything else in Morro Bay. The pine trees have largely gone, but it's still a very different, beautiful place, where I'd like to see a sense of the fact that we have such large lots that aren't necessarily utilized, and you don't have homes wall-to-wall on the street. There's, there's space, there's a lot of space, and you can see the sky. I didn't build the house that I live in. I don't consider it actually a bona fide two-story house. There is one room over the garage that, if the garage is an actual eight-foot ceiling, which I'm not sure of, then it is one area that you could characterize as two-story, but the rest of it is one-story. And, you know, again, we all have extra-big lots. My neighbor on the west of me built part of their, their house, added on two-story, but it was... but it was, it was not the way the house, houses looked when I moved in. So, I'm hoping to keep the neighborhood as much like, like it was, and the reason I bought it. When I bought my house, it was very expensive. I mean, now you'd laugh at how much I paid for it, but at the time, it was a lot more than other homes in Morro Bay, and I was willing to pay it for all the reasons that we talked, that I just mentioned. And I'm, I've had such a long day. I know there were other things that I wanted to say, but I'm not real happy about having a two-story house looming over me, because he mentioned that his house is actually below the Blackwell House, but my house is below his. And I've been juggling for many years having a view and having privacy, and I just had, finally, after almost 40 years, gotten it to a place where, you know, I, I felt like I was in a little haven that I had created, and I was happy about it, and whoosh, I think it's really at risk now. So, I'm worried about beginning to babble. I better stop here. But it was difficult to stay, stay up this late and do this. It's sad that we had to do it so late, so, you know, I certainly am not at my best. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I do apologize for the hour.
My name is Dorothy Cutter, and I would suggest that the planning commission delay voting on this project and give the planning director time to finalize his guidelines for neighborhood compatibility. We do have reference to this in our general plan, but it's not very specific. Our zoning code, as it stands today, that sort of encourages almost the worst in people. It makes every property owner an island unto himself without consideration for his neighbor. And now, I know some people feel that, well, they paid for the property, they can do what they want with their property, but you still have to live. It's a community, and we still have to live together. And when people have views, that's where they come to Morro Bay. That's why they want to be here. And if you block their view, you destroy their light and air. That doesn't make for a good neighborhood. So, I would suggest that you delay and let the planning director get on so that this commission has tools to work with so that they can recommend alternatives and better planning. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've, we've already--
I just have to ask one question, because I was so surprised at the contour of the picture that the architect showed, because I know that, that property is flat as a pancake, and it shows a raised level where the house, living quarters are, and then a depression where the garage is. And I'm just curious how much dirt is going to be moved in order to achieve that, and, you know, which, is, is there excavation going on, or are they adding dirt on the other side? Because that's not the contour of the property as it is now. Thank you.
My name is Casey Caldwell. I'm a Morro Bay resident, and I want to help you have the tools that you need to deny the permit as submitted or require that the applicant change the design of the project. The LCP and general plan are the mandates by which this permit should be denied, and the neighborhood compatibility is the principle under which you should review this design. We know already that bulk, size, and scale are important components of neighborhood compatibility. Let's be careful about slapping a well-used phrase like bulk, size, and scale onto the concept and thinking that any design of moderate size must be compatible with the neighborhood. That isn't always true. The planning department must continually return again and again with each permit application to the basic principles or fail in implementing the intent of neighborhood compatibility. So let's get back to the basics. What is neighborhood compatibility? It's design. It's all about design and placement. Respectful, thoughtful, compatible designs that preserve the character of the area and placement that respects public and private attributes of the neighborhood. So who's doing what with view protection these days? In 2006, the following California cities had private view protection in their municipal codes. Arroyo Grande, Carmel-by-the-Sea, Del Mar, Laguna Beach, Monterey, Rancho Palisverdes, Sausalito, Tiburon. And now, it's 2015. Back then, a lot of the private view protection ordinances were about trees and greenery, blocking views with shrubbery, but not necessarily about blocking views with, with structure. Things are different now, especially right here locally in San Luis County. Arroyo Grande has, has a really great view shed review. It's 16.16.110 of their municipal code, if you want to look it up. And I want to read to you the purpose and intent from Arroyo Grande. "It is the intent of this city to preserve the existing scope and character of established single-family neighborhoods and to protect views and aesthetics and other property values in such neighborhoods in a manner that is compatible with reasonable expansion on existing developed lots and/or a new development on existing undeveloped lots." In order to get a permit in Arroyo Grande, the community development director or planning commission may approve an application only if all of the following findings of fact can be made in an affirmative manner. "The proposed structure is consistent with the intent," that I just read. "The proposed structure is consistent with the established scale and character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably or unnecessarily affect the views of surrounding Montesereno is a city near Santa Clara. I'm just going to take some excerpts from these, these guidelines. "Roof lines should be designed in ways that minimize interference with views from neighboring properties." Monterey, California, "reviews all aspects of a proposal that influence outside appearance, view sharing, and neighborhood compatibility." Tiburon, "to preserve existing views as much as possible and allow new dwellings access to views similar to those enjoyed from existing dwellings." The League of California Cities in their municipal law handbook, section 10.3.45, it's a special issues section, says, "View protection ordinances, however, are legitimate exercises of the local government-police power." And they cite two cases to support that. Ross versus the City of Rolling Hills Estates and Giannani versus San Francisco City Planning. You have the tools that you need to find that private view protection is a part, it's a fundamental part of neighborhood compatibility. And view protection doesn't mean 100%. It means view sharing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I am going to ask everybody to try and keep it to three minutes, if you can. That's fair to everybody. Who else would, yeah?
Good evening. My name is Betty Winholtz. I'd like to address four points from the presentation today. The first one has to do with the one from staff regarding points that they wanted to make to the public. And the third point, which had to do with the zoning ordinance. And I think this is, for me, a critical piece of information, that as our zoning ordinance has changed, it hasn't necessarily changed in compatibility with our general plan, that our general plan does ask for neighborhood compatibility in size, bulk, and scale, and our zoning ordinance has been modified and doesn't necessarily reinforce that yet today. And so, as you know, that the planning, general plan is really the one that's in force here, not the zoning ordinance, in my opinion, that it's supposed to enforce that, but when it's stepped outside the line, we need to go back to the general plan. The second point I'd like to make is, and it's one that a couple of people have mentioned, and that is that it's really not about square footage, though that's always a big red flag, but it's really about how it sits on the lot and where it goes and how it's articulated or set back and down. And so, it's, it's really kind of amazing that, and I thought that the architect's picture itself almost exposed itself as why it doesn't fit in the neighborhood, how it stood up above all the other houses, how it stood out, and how it doesn't fit, though the square footage may be similar. The way it's been designed really steps up and pokes out on, on, on what would be my public view, not necessarily someone's private view, but just as I am a walker who does Ridgeway, that thing's just going to be in my face. And so, the idea about flipping or the mirroring, I, I don't see how that's a big problem in compromise, because to do that, maybe, might require a little bit more digging, maybe not, but it, it creates better relationship in the community if it creates a better presentation to the public and our public views. I think that that, that's a possibility. And I think that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think I hesitate to give my name, because it appears I'm going to be the only person who's speaking in favor of the applicant, so probably not going to be real popular here, but I'm a person who moved here from Fresno, spent most of my life living in Fresno from 56 to 90, was allowed to move to the coast, never expected to be able to live at the coast. I'm not a builder, not a contractor, but I am a designer. I've designed several homes, and I've built four, three here in this county, my present home in Morro Bay and two in Los Osos. When I moved to Los Osos, I bought a house, I tear down and tore it down. It was a shack, literally. It's not as bad as this house on Ridgeway. It was a shack. So I tore down the shack and built a brand-new, beautiful house on the lot, maybe took away somebody's view, I don't know. I was shocked to find out that I had to draw a circle on the plat map and contact everyone within 400-foot radius to get their permission to build a house, because I was building it within the specs, but I still had to get their permission. I built a house in Morro Bay, and I don't think I took away anyone's view, but I built a two-story house out in the strand, right to the very maximum setbacks, because that's what I needed to do to build the house I wanted. The neighbor across the street, who ended up moving up to the bay, by the one time, he was thinking about putting a second story in his house, and if he would have done that, I wouldn't have complained, because I'm not guaranteed a view. There's no such thing really as view entitlement, or being guaranteed a view unless you live on the beach, and you're pretty much guaranteed a view, or if you live up high on the side of the mountain, where you have the three-story houses, you're pretty much guaranteed a view. But rolling hills or flats, you're not guaranteed a view. You have one. If, if these people, I don't know any of these people, so I have no skin in the game, except for philosophical reasons. But if they had a view at their lot since 1952, that's 62 years, because I was born in 52, so I know it's 62 years. That's pretty fortunate, they've had a view that long, and I don't know if they expect to have a view for 162 years or 262 years, but nothing lasts forever. But we're all fortunate in that we live in a little fishing village on the coast called Morro Bay, so we all actually have a view. It might not be from our windows, but we all live on the coast, and there's nobody in this town who can't get an unencumbered view in any more than five minutes to drive down to the beach or down to the rock. I was just spent the day yesterday down on the Embarcadero, walking along the teepiers, and I had an unencumbered view of the rock and the beach and the seals and the otters. And I'm lucky to be able to live in a place where I have a view anytime I want it. I just have to drive or ride my bike down to the beach. But I'm not guaranteed a view out of the window of my house. I happen to have a view right now of the rock and the open ocean, a little bit. Someone builds across the street or next to me, tears it down, the house, and builds a two-story and takes away my view, that's, that's life. They have the right to do that. That's why there's setbacks and height requirements, and if you follow those, you're doing what you're allowed to do. But everyone in Morro Bay, everyone along the coast of California has a view, really. It might not be out of their window, and that's not guaranteed, but within five minutes, they can be walking on the beach or walking on that beautiful walk that somebody built out to the rock. And that's the same with every town along the coast. And, you know, there are people in Omaha, Nebraska, who don't have a view of the ocean, and people in Salt Lake City who don't have a view of the ocean. I've been all over the country. But here in Morro Bay, everybody has a view. You just have to walk or drive to it and enjoy it. And to keep this fellow, I don't know this person, from building his dream house, which will actually add property value that, the people next door said their value of the house is going to go down 150,000, I think that's the stretch.
Okay, I was going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. I think that's the stretch, because realtors always embellish the, you know, the, the views and the value of a view. But this two-story house is going to actually upgrade the, the value of the neighborhood, because it's going to be a brand-new, beautiful house. And you can't keep the character of towns the way they were, because when they're built 50, 60, 70 years ago with smaller houses, you either have urban sprawl, where you build your new, bigger houses outside it, and you eat up open space.
Okay, maybe, maybe you didn't understand that I was asking you to wrap it up.
Oh, well, okay, I am. I'm just saying that you cannot keep the character of a, of a neighborhood forever, because you either build outside and eat up open space, or you build up newer houses where existing houses are. Most people prefer to be a, not urban sprawl, but to infill and keep the, the neighborhood the way it is, and if you have to build up, that's what you have to do. It's not a bad thing. It's not.
Okay. Thank you. And again, let's try and keep it to three minutes, folks, you know, there's a lot of people that want to talk, so. Anyone else?
Grant Crowell, Morro Bay. Neighborhood compatibility. We're going to hear a lot of that pretty soon. Compatibility means being a good neighbor. And if you can build a house and not take somebody's full view, that's a good neighbor. That's a good architect. Somebody who wants to come in and say, "My dream home is to build this, and I don't really care about the neighbor who's, has their dream home, that they're going to lose all that they had, because my dream home is more important than their existence." That's neighborhood non-compatibility. I mean, that's just building enemies. And I think as a, as a community, we need to look at that. It was interesting, the other day, on my Facebook page, tiny houses came up. In 1950, it was 2.75, no, 3.75 people per house in the country. Average-sized home in 1950 was 960 square feet. The new idea of what's happening across the country is to go back to smaller houses, but what they said is, is currently, right now, they're building 2,600 square feet for 2.5 people. So we've lost more than a person per household and much bigger square footage. So, we need to start celebrating smaller homes and compatible to the neighborhood, really compatible to the neighborhood. I'm not saying don't build a house. I'm not saying he shouldn't get what he wants, but he really should kind of build. I mean, if they're blocking the whole wall of the neighbor's house, is that really compatible? Is that really fair? Nothing's fair, but I mean, really? Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Bass, Morro Bay. I think Ms. Winholtz had a really fine point, that the policy of, in the, the rules in the LCP are really the basis-- the LCP are really the basis for everything. The ordinances can be changed, and we know that we have had people in authoritarian positions that have changed things to suit themselves, and they're, shall I say it, cronies. And that's what happens. But please, the basic thing is there in the coastal plan about view protection, about privacy, and that really should be the basic thing on which you should decide. The ordinances can be changed. They were changed. They were better before. They were changed by people that had, that weren't conforming to the policies of our local coastal plan. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to come forward? So, I'm gonna ask while we have public comment open, are there questions for the appellant? Are there questions for the applicants? Okay. Good. For the architect or the owner? Or both? Either?
On your plans on the east wall, the one that's facing the appellant's house, you say high windows on those plans, but it looks like those windows are, start at 7, 7.6, and look like three or four-foot windows, so it'd still be below eye level.
Yeah, we could, you know, like the ones in the master bedroom, well, yeah, in that drawing, they're shown to be a little lower, but they could be certainly higher to where they would be, you know, at eye level.
Would you be willing to set them above eye level, so?
Yeah, as long as both Helen and Eric can reach them. They're both, you know, of that height where if you were, if the sill was at five, it would probably be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, no trouble with that. And I did want to just mention the one thing about site grading. I mean, we're, the whole goal of positioning the building the way it is is to absolutely minimize site grading. And the way we chose to site the building was to keep as much undisturbed site as possible for, not only for utilization, but also for stormwater issues and things like that.
Okay. According to the, my reading of the topo, it looks like there's a four-foot drop from side lot to side lot?
From side to side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about right. It's 10 from front to back diagonally, and then from the one diagonal of the house to the low end of the house, it's about a four-foot drop under the house itself, which does drop our, the building down quite a bit. If we were on a flat lot, the building could be about two feet taller.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Actually. Can you talk about the sighting of the master bedroom, what the thinking behind that is?
Sure. You want me to pull the floor plan up or is that? It is basically on that side of the building, if you will, which is the higher side. It's 30 inches higher than the garage. So, you know, that's kind of where it went, and it's also that side of the site is a little higher as well. Because if we were to mirror it, everything would be, you know, anywhere from 2.5 to four feet up in the air. And then the garage would've been, I guess we could've put the garage on the other side, but the mirroring of the project wouldn't change the mass. Our floor would still basically be at the same elevation.
No, but what I was curious about is, did you site it there because of the view from the master bedroom?
It was mostly the slope of the site because the garage wanted to go on the low side where the garage goes now.
But the master bedroom itself, I mean, it would seem to me that you could slide it along that wall without any considerable...
Oh, you mean slide it behind the garage?
Yeah, or slide it down somewhat. I mean, it seems to me that the testimony suggests I didn't go in the Blackwell's house. I don't know the layout of the Blackwell's house. It strikes me that when we see the piece of the Blackwell's house up above, that there's multiple windows looking down toward, across the back portion of this property. One of them, it struck me, I was unconvinced anything was gonna be blocked at all. The other one suggests maybe it is blocked a bit. And so, I was just wondering, could you slide the bedroom down a bit? If it's not specifically there to get a particular, unique view, and it had the ability to slide such that more of the view was revealed, I guess that's the thing I was curious about. You're not taking advantage of the interior space underneath the roof pitch, so there's nothing unusual about the space relative to the roof. So, you know, another thing that could be suggested is, could you look at that going to a lower-slope roof, which could also, you know, open up some of the view shed again? I mean, I'm struck, let's comment, I'm not gonna comment on things. I just wondered, I just wondered if, what was the thinking behind that? Because I know at some point you potentially have the laundry room adjacent that might get into some floor plan issues, but, you know, without flipping the whole house, just sliding the master bedroom, the door to the master bedroom's on the one extreme, make it my directions right, on the west side of that end of the common wall, and if it, if you slid that down, you wouldn't be changing the bathroom or things like that. You would just be changing the point where the entrance to the bedroom shows up. But you would be changing, you would be changing the access to the rear yard from the first-floor cement.
That's correct. I'm gonna go walk over here and point to it. This is the hallway right here, and this is how we get out to the back.
Right.
And this is the laundry. So, the reason why this is here is just to respect the hallway. We're just trying to minimize the area of the building to some extent. And I believe this is almost 15 feet from the neighborhood. This is the view I'm talking about, that I believe that their window is here. This view here is still gonna be their view. You know, now, if we move this down this way, I mean, we, you know, it could be done. We would just need to have a hallway, but then the way the stairs land down on this landing from the back to the top, there's some exterior stairs that land here, so those two things start to crowd. I mean, there's a, you know, there's a reason for everything, but, you know, I thought the way we were set back, I believe 12 feet here, and then almost 15 here, I thought that was a huge gesture to me, in our idea, but. I mean, what you're suggesting is it could be done, but it would increase the size of the building, and it would complicate the flow a bit. Any other questions?
Let's don't make him walk back up here again, guys. Okay. So, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. I'll take, I'll take a volunteer this time. Who'd like to go first?
I'd like to ask staff a question. In this process, can we condition the applicant's project on this, or is this already a fatal
The only thing that we have in front of you is the, is the resolution denying the appeal. You don't have anything, there's no, there's nothing else with it. We would have, you could give a direction, we could see if they were in agreement and they wanted to change it, and we could go back and work on that. I mean, that would be something, that'd be something that is brought back to you. That's not what's before you. It's just the appeal. So, if you wanna do something other than take an action on that, then you need to have some more discussion.
Okay. Okay, that's kind of what I thought. I was just considering what our range of options were on this. Okay. Thanks.
Why don't you continue?
This is always a really tricky, you know, tricky balancing act. You've got, you've got the property rights and you've got, you've got to actually have a project here that did, it may not be everybody's, you know, idea of what the best project would be there, but it does fit within the guidelines and it does fit within the rules that, that I can see were set about through the zoning ordinance. Now, I got a question for our eminent esquire here. As far as the interplay between the LCP and the general plan and the zoning ordinance, if, if there, if the zoning ordinance has specific quantifiable figures in it, which would take precedence? A general, a general, you know, general statement that say we want, you know, light and air or something that would say we want 30 parts per million or something?
The plans and the zoning ordinances are different tools, but they're complementary tools. And what we typically have with regards to the plans is our long-term, long-range documents to set general policies, goals, and objectives for the city. And then those goals, policies, and objectives are specifically implemented by the zoning ordinances. And given the nature of the zoning ordinance, you can refine the zoning ordinance over time and still be consistent with those goals, policies, and objectives of the overlying plan. So, the city has flexibility on how it approaches with its zoning ordinance. And one of the ways that we see that happening is, for example, it may say we want certain amount of light or air, and then the zoning ordinance specifies what would be the appropriate amount of light and air by setting setbacks for those particular issues. So, could the zoning ordinance be changed at some future point to do more setbacks or reduce the amount of setbacks and still be consistent with the plans? Yes. But as long as they account for those and are generally consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the plans, you don't have inconsistencies between the documents.
Okay. So, say we have, you know, like we have here, we have the zoning ordinance that says we have a five-foot setback requirement, but we also have, you know, the general plan that says we should be compatible. Would the zoning ordinance take precedence over the general plan?
The general plan always takes precedent over the zoning ordinance. They're not, all zoning ordinances are supposed to be consistent with the general plan. However, based upon what I've seen, if they say you need to have, I forgot your example, views or whatever the case may be, there's nothing that I've seen so far that says that the zoning ordinance is inconsistent with the general plan. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that directly contradicts. You're looking for general consistency. Does it generally implement it? Is it consistent with the goals, the intents, the overlying policies? Now, if you had something, for example, in the, in the general plan, I'm just picking a random example because we had bikes earlier this, in the discussion, if you had a discussion how you wanted bike lanes in the general plan and you had included your bike master plan as part of your general plan and designated certain streets, and then in your zoning ordinance somehow came across and allowed for those bike lanes to be eaten by houses through a process, then you have an inconsistency issue. Because there's no way you could connect those bike lanes while still approving houses or narrower street widths that wouldn't be able to accommodate them. That's when you start getting into the conflict issue. However, if you were still setting general widths of your streets and you did a road diet, I believe is what they call it, so it narrows it down and it gives you that extra bike lane, that's still entirely consistent with the general plan, as is going out eminent and domaining an entire block and taking two or three feet for that bike lane as well. There's different ways you can get to that bike lane. There's no locked-in way, but the city sets a policy and then implements that through the zoning ordinance. So, here, the city council's approved the zoning ordinance, saying the zoning ordinance is consistent with our goals, policies, intents, and objectives in our, in our general plan, and we're implementing it through the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
I hope that wasn't too long and drawn out. It's late at night, so.
No, I, that's, that's what I was asking. Okay, so, I guess my conclusion on this, if that's what we're looking for?
Discussion.
Is it, the, you know, the, this project actually has increased as further setbacks than was actually required. They, they actually set back, they set back the, you know, 15 feet, you know, 12 feet and seven feet, you know, thereabouts. So, where only a five-foot setback was required. We don't have any tools and to, to protect somebody's private view from their side lot, from my understanding. So, I don't see that this, this project is incompatible with the zoning ordinance and the regulations that we, we are working, working under.
I think it's very unfortunate that we are here tonight and having to, that an accommodation for the Blackwells and for, you know, the builder couldn't have been made outside of this room. You know, I think it shows that we do need to really go forward with stronger neighborhood compatibility and guidelines. I don't feel that we have the tools or the, it does hit every single setback that we could overturn this appeal. So, I just think it's unfortunate that a little more, hopefully, cooperation couldn't have solved it between the two.
For the public's sake, can you explain the appeal process? Like, let's say if the appeal, let's say the appeal gets upheld, where does it go from there?
If the planning commission were to uphold the planning director's decision to deny tonight, is that what you're asking? The applicant or?
Director.
I'm sorry. It's, it's about 10:30. My brain starts to, starts to go a different direction, so bear with me here. If the planning commission upholds the, the director's decision tonight on this, there is an appeal process that's set forth in the code. I believe it's 10 days' time. The, any interested person has a right of appeal to file the appeal to the city council. Now, if they miss that deadline, then there's no right of appeal. So, the decision tonight is an appealable decision, and if there is a desire to bring it to the city council, that certainly is an option. I note that there have been neighborhood compatibility issues. Everybody is, some people have said, "Well, why don't we wait till see that's resolved?" That's currently not a legal option for the city unless it were to consider something like a moratorium or an urgency ordinance in order to be able to address that, because there is an application before the planning commission tonight, and there's no adopted neighborhood design guidelines at this particular point, especially since the city has had a history of, I believe, bringing up these different versions on several times, which it has never approved.
Okay, but on the, on the flip side, let's say, you know, the, the staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal. If we approve the appeal, does it go to city council? It could.
Only if somebody appeals it. So, whatever decision you make tonight, if it's to approve or deny, it can be appealed to the city council.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That, that said, I, I think this is a classic case here for where the general plan is looked at and we have neighborhood compatibility. The, the one picture that we saw with the house, I drove all around the area. This area has a lot of one-story houses and now two-story houses, if they're there, they don't look like two-story houses. To me, this house is out of character, right there. This house is out of character with the neighborhood, and if there's any, I mean, if there's any house that, to me, that this neighborhood compatibility issue is brought forward, this is, this is one. And I feel that there is a lot of other options that can be, that can be done with this kind of project that can allow the neighbor to still see their view. I, I don't see a view with the way it's presented right now for the neighbor and also the... and also the impact that it is for the public. So I, with all due respect to our staff, and I have a lot of respect for the planning staff, I do. However, in this particular case, I, I don't, I respectfully disagree with, with your conclusion.
Well, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to go over to the site with the owner. It's really hard to understand the complexities of, and nuances of what makes a good place a good place unless you really, you really get into it. So I appreciate the images that were put up there for the presentation tonight. You know, first thing strikes me is, you know, I, I came out here like a lot of folks and, you know, I just have different type of skills. And I, I knew a hundred percent nobody was ever going to block the view I have from my house. And I'm, I'm fortunate I see from, you know, Cayucus to the edge of Montanero, and it's unblockable. And that's not the case everywhere. And, and so it's interesting that the real estate agent specifically says unblockable views. Because that's a problem here. Some views are potentially blockable. And when I see a lot depth like this and then I see someone is putting a forty-foot rear yard depth back, rear yard setback, and I'm thinking, that's less than, you know, that's an enormous rear yard. These people could be talking about building twenty, thirty feet beyond where this house is now. And so I think, okay, that shows some restraint. And I'm looking at the square footage and I'm thinking, well, that shows some restraint. But then I look at what really seems to be the issue when I look at those pictures, looking out the window. It's where, I, I can, I can deal with the two-story house. There are two-story houses in that neighborhood. I, I drive through there periodically. I, I don't know exactly where they are on the map, but I know there's two-story houses. And when you look out the Blackwells windows in those images, you're seeing somebody with a pretty huge roof down the street. I don't know if it's two doors down, three doors down. There is a massive amount of orange, likely Spanish tile roof down there. So my sense is, what's, what's the real issue here? Is it just where that bedroom is? And, and that's why it's very frustrating for me as, as an architect as well to know that it may be that bedroom's off by two or three feet. And that's what's causing all of this gnashing of teeth. And, and do we have the, do we have the responsibility, do we have the obligation to say, "No, no, we don't." I, I completely agree with Commissioner Law. There's nothing really here that I think forces our hand to, to say, "No, you have to do that." But it, it, it is a kind of a civic courtesy. We've had projects here before. When I was on the planning commission several years ago, there, there was an issue where someone built and, and we just asked them to put a hip in a different direction. And it, it kept somebody's view on an adjacent property. And, and I specifically remember that, that project because it was just a small courtesy somebody could do to help their neighbor. It, it's not always possible to see those things. Sometimes these things get farther down the line. I can see how the owner of this lot thinks they've been very generous. And I think in a lot of ways they have. But there is that one thing about, when I look at the plan and I look at those images. Again, I wasn't in the, the appellant's house, but it, it strikes me that the roof of the master bedroom, the placement of the master bedroom, it's, it's something that could be worked on. Is that something we can ask them to do? Well, I guess it would be in, you know, with what Commissioner Sodowsky is saying is, is we could, we could support the appeal. And one thing that could be suggested is that the building might be more acceptable should the master bedroom be changed. I, I don't, I don't see the, it's not, I don't think it's too big of a house. And I, I think they've been very generous with the way they've, they've, with what they've done in many ways. I think it's just that one piece, I think, is really odd and, and maybe fixable. So I'm, I'm not sure how I want to vote. But that's what I see as the issue.
Now, this is, this is a very, this is a very difficult situation. I think, I think one of the, I think the difficulty of this situation is illustrated by the public comments. We had one lady who felt that the problem was that the house was going to tower over her and the solution would be to make it one-story, which of course would make it much bigger in lateral dimension and would aggravate the problem for the appellant's view. And, and then we, we had, we had the view that it's, you know, it's too large from the street view. And then we, and the obvious solution to that would be to push the lot in a more northerly direction, push the house in a more northerly, northerly direction on the lot, which would bring down the elevation and make it less prominent from the street. So the, the problem here is trying to take these very general statements that are in the local coastal plan and in the, and in the general plan and apply them case by case to specific instances. And I think that, I think that this just underlines how badly we need these, these design guidelines to get out there. And maybe we need to look at them again as we bring them together and see where we can make them even more specific, where we can put in some numbers perhaps. You know, I, I think as we, as we look at them again, I, I don't think they have, they maybe not, don't have the teeth to deal with some of these situations and, and maybe we need to, to, to deal with that. But the, but the, you know, the bottom, the bottom line is there is really no way to do what we're being asked to do right now, which is to take these general principles and apply them and apply them to specific instances and be fair to everyone, you know? It just, it, it can't be done. There is, there is, there is no doubt, no doubt whatsoever that the city has the full authority to implement design guidelines, neighborhood compatibility guidelines, view protection ordinances, or, or whatever. But I think it has to be done in a thoughtful way and I think it has to be done in a prospective way. I, I really don't, you know, what we're being, what we're really being asked to do tonight is to essentially write an ordinance. You know, to, to do, to apply the general plan in a way that it's not been applied before. It's, it's a change. Maybe it's a change, maybe it's a change for the better, I don't know. But I, the one thing that I take comfort in, I think, is that whatever we decide tonight, pretty much, it's going to, this is going to go to the city council and that's actually where it belongs. If there's going to be, in my opinion, if there's going to be a change in policy, a change in the way the general plan is going to be applied, that needs to come from people who got elected, you know? And I don't think, nobody voted for any of us up here. So, so that's, that's, that's a comfort to me. The only thing that, there's only, there is only one way for this to end up in a win-win situation. And, and maybe it's something to be considered. And I think this speaks a little bit to what you were saying, Michael, which is, you know, maybe we could continue the review, instruct staff to work with the applicant and the appellant and see if there is not some relatively, you know, reasonable, non, you know, non-deal breaker type of modifications that can bring this project together. Is that something that, is that something that's within our scope to consider?
I, I guess. Well, certainly you can continue the item. That is within your purview. You've told them what you're interested in. The only thing that I would ask that you do now is ask them to get up here and see if they're interested in doing it or that they want a decision.
Okay.
Because if they want a decision, give them a decision and they can go forward however they choose to. And they, and I mean, they may want that. I, you know, I mean, just not make them do something that they're not interested in necessarily. If they want a decision.
That's reasonable. So let's, let's, let's reopen public comment for the purpose of allowing the applicant and the appellant to let us know if they would be willing to have some discussions for a month, say. We'd, maybe that'd be a reasonable time to, to continue. And, and see if we couldn't come up with a solution that, that works for both of you. So whichever one would like to come to the microphone first?
Yes, I totally agree with that. That's kind of what we wanted in the beginning. I, I think Mr. Boudreau has our, the perspective of our view of the rock a little off. So I think that needs to be a lot more specific and verified. Maybe we could request story polls so we could really see?
Well, let's don't, let's don't, let's don't get into solutions there. All, all we're asking for is a commitment to have a discussion.
Yes.
That's all.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I think I, I kind of agree with the idea of cooperation, but the problem with this site is, is that his window is in the middle of our property. It's, you know, the fact that this, the building, and if, if I could show the broader plan where you see the whole site. Do you have anything that shows the whole, his whole footprint? Could I call it up on this? In any case, my point is, is that his building, his building extends all the way to here.
Right.
That's my garage.
And so, and there's, and there's building here as well. So the fact that this, this window of preservation, and I understand, I mean, everything everybody's saying is valid. There's no, everybody's right. But uniquely, if, if the goal is to preserve this view in the middle of this lot, how, you know, where do we go from there? I mean, and I, you know, okay, this could be moved. We'd have to redesign and rethink back and access and all that issue. But I don't, I don't know if that would really net out what he's looking for. But the problem with this specific condition is this dimension right here and the fact that these windows bicep. Now, what's going on in here is I, I didn't have the opportunity to go there. We talked about story polls, but he wasn't interested in contributing to that effort. You know, generally, it's been more about what, what they want in this process than what we've tried to do here. And I think this is a modest design for a nine-thousand-foot lot.
And, and we agree with you. There's, there's no question that the commission, I think every one of the commissioners agrees with that.
But is this about preserving private views now? Is that what, is, has this become the lightning rod for that? It's about, it's about preserving private views?
That's, 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 that's the position. I, I'm, I don't know that this commission has endorsed that position.
But that's the only, that's the only thing that is not right.
Well, I, with, there's been, there's been comments about, you know, the, the view, the, the, the two-story view and the proximity to the street and that's, you know?
Well, we can push it further back and make it shorter. That's easy to do.
Right.
I'm not totally convinced you can't mirror that. And that would help that situation with the view with the neighbor. And also, I, I feel that if you sat down, I think that you, you guys can come up with a solution.
So you respect the neighbor's view.
Well, not only that, it's view sharing. It's, it's neighborhood compatibility. That's all part of it.
Where was that in the ordinance?
It's a subjective thing. So we have to kind of look at it from a subjective standpoint. And it's not like protecting somebody's view. It's like view sharing. It's part of the neighborhood compatibility.
Where was that in the ordinance?
And it's the positioning. It's not so much as the bulk and scale.
Is your answer no? Is your answer no, sir? Do you not wish to?
Well, you guys have got, you know, what, another thing is, is that four out of five of you met with, with this person? And we didn't have a chance to talk to you or that wasn't made known to us? I mean, it's a feeling a little awkward here.
Yeah, they're, we, we met with them. I, you know, I, I walked through the house. I saw their view. Did not discuss any, anything regarding the, the project or, or the application. So it was just, it was strictly a site, a site visit. And there was, there was no, there was no other.
Well, it just feels a little awkward to have four out of five of you having met with the person. So I think it's kind of degraded a little bit. But the reality is, is I just want to make sure that the commission is, is clear about the fact that this effort, this project is the lightning rod for preserving views. Because we, it's not about scale. It's not about mass, all those things. I think this is modest. I think people are not appreciating the fact that this site is lower than the neighbor's site. And, and we've done every, I mean, the way the, the roof points to Ridgeway to make the front look shorter. I mean, as an architect, Mr. Lucas, I think you, you could appreciate this. And I see your, I know, I know where you're going with the bedroom and I do think that's a key and I worked with that quite a bit. But it would be at an expense and at inefficiencies that we'd, we would do that and it would be for the benefit of the neighbor, not for our benefit.
Well, I, I think what we're trying, I mean, I'll speak my, so what, what, what we're trying to do is make this not be a lightning rod for view protection.
Well, it's become that, though.
Well, but if, if the two of you can work it out among yourselves, it doesn't, it becomes not that anymore. It becomes a discussion between two neighbors. So, you know, I, I totally feel that it, this needs not to be that, okay? I, I mean, I would, I would much prefer it not to be that because I think that whole issue needs to be thought out in advance, okay? With, with no specific case on the table. I, I mean, there are so many factors to consider in approaching that subject. I just would prefer that we don't do it on a case-by-case basis.
No, I can appreciate that.
Yeah. I mean, there, there are obviously many more points that have not been brought up. For example, you're, you're correct, okay? You're blocking a view from one window, okay? So there are remedies for that. The interior of the appellant's house could be reconfigured.
Absolutely.
The walls could be moved. And, and then the question becomes, okay, how much view protection are, are you entitled to? Or how much view sharing or whatever you want to call it? Are you entitled to with no effort on your part? You see, you see what I'm saying?
Well, and who pays for the redesign?
So, so, so I, you know, I just, I don't think we can settle those issues in this forum. You know, certainly not even being the elected body of the, of the, of the city. I, I'm just saying, are you guys willing to have a discussion?
I think, I think it's in, in, in the full context. And I just want to make sure, my, my point is, is that, and I went to the neighborhood meeting two weeks ago. There's a lot of energy in this city about all this and it's about, it's, there's a few key people in this community there that are all about preserving private views. And so we have, we're at the wrong place at the wrong time. So, you know, I'm aware of the, of the environment that we're in and it probably does seem to be the best thing for us to, to continue, which would allow us time to take a break and rethink and re-approach this as opposed to either, and I don't know where you guys are going, whether you would uphold or support staff or whether you'd go against staff. But I guess basically if you continue, we just take a break and, and come back again? Is that how we do that? If we continue the project?
Well, we can continue it to a date specific.
Yes.
Yeah, so?
And, and, and I don't, I, I don't think it should be a long time in the future. I mean, I think if we could make it not more than four weeks, you know?
Not, not the next meeting, but the following one? That be acceptable?
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I can already see what I'm going to do. I mean, we're focused on a window in the center of our property. It's, this is a really tall order from a design standpoint. And it's asking us to, to put quite a bit of focus on something that, you know, with all the other things we're supposed to do. And I, again, as an architect, I think you probably is the only one knows what it's like to get a project approved nowadays. But with this now being an, basically the tail wagging the dog, it's, puts us in a really unique position.
Well, but again, I, I don't... Well, but again, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're asking you to redesign the project, you know what I'm saying? What I'm, what, I think what we're asking is, you know, is there something that you can reasonably do that will not, that will not, you know, not rightly add to the cost and, you know, that to, to make this situation or to make this issue, to resolve it, yeah, to, in other words, to, to, and I, and again, I think, I think you, I think we've all heard the appellant's assurances that he's not looking to preserve his entire view. He's looking to, you know, for something, you know? And maybe it's not, maybe the answer is no, you know, and maybe, maybe you can't. I mean, all we're saying is, can, can you take a look at it and see if there's something that's reasonable?
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. I think that's in everybody's best interest and.
That's all.
I appreciate you letting me, you know, blow off a little steam here, so. So, continue to date certain, is that the?
So, we'd be looking May 5th?
Yeah.
That would be, that's two, the next meeting?
No, let me ask you the, okay, let me.
So, well, I guess, I mean.
I'm going to have to look at that.
That would be two meetings. The next meeting is, is April 21st.
Let me ask you this and if, if they say they do find a, you know, something, a solution that is doable for them, you know, that they can live with, that doesn't choke them and they make a change, you know, some change in the plan and you approve it as the director, does that?
They could withdraw their appeal.
So, that, that would be the, that would, that would certainly be the easiest route if that went forward, that one.
Well, I think that's why you're, you're asking to continue is they can work something out so we don't end up.
Right, okay.
Back here, I, I think I'm making the city attorney uncomfortable. Shannon, would you like to say something?
Yeah, that, that woke me up. Typically, appeals can't be withdrawn once the Planning Commission has started hearing the matter, but I think there is poss, if you're guys willing to go out on the, on the limb a little bit, you may be able as part of your motion to continue. As part of that motion, authorize the withdrawal of the appeal and if the, and, it's late at night, I'm sorry about that. Authorize the withdrawal, authorize the appellant to withdraw their appeal, which would reinstate the director's previous decision. And the director could have then approved that decision. No, that wouldn't work because you couldn't approve it with revisions at that particular Just do it as a minor mod?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, that would be the way to do it. Okay. So, how that would work is your motion tonight would be to continue the matter to a date certain, which would probably be, I believe you said, what was it, May 5th? And accept that the matter would be taken off calendar if the parties reached a resolution and you would authorize the appellant to withdraw their appeal and the director's decision would then become final and then the director would process a minor modification.
And that decision could ultimately be appealed back, so.
Yes.
They would still have the opportunity. It's not done, we're not getting rid of anybody's opportunities to do, do anything.
So, the risk.
I mean, that's the point, I'm.
The risk with that approach, I just want to be sure that we're really clear. It could resolve it very quickly this evening, you may never see this again, but the risk is, is if the minor mod goes through, I'm not sure if the minor modification, I haven't checked, has an appeals process to it. So.
It's, it's, you can, you can appeal any director's decision.
In which case, if somebody disagrees with the minor modification, it could come back before this Planning Commission as to that minor modification, which may be to slide the bedroom or do whatever is, is being done, which means that limited issue would now be before the Planning Commission again. So, and if the Planning Commission denied that and the City Council denied that, then you would have the project approved in its current state as approved by the director. So, it can get complicated pretty fast, but it might be a way to shortcut the process.
And it's expen, and it's expensive.
Did you get it on tape? On tape, yes.
So, what if we, okay, so what if we just brought it back on the 5th and then, and then if they've reached an agreement, we deny the appeal? The major, the minor modification has been filed and wouldn't that be done with it then?
Could it just go on consent calendar?
Assuming.
We could bring it back and you could do away with the appeal based on the agreements. It would still be a public hearing. It's a continued public hearing, so, yeah. And it would, so we add issue, we'd be discussing what the change would be too, so, yeah. So, we'd be still having a hearing on it.
And if there's no change, then we're just going to pick up where we left off, right?
Correct, right, that's correct.
Okay.
That's a legally safer approach if you're inclined to do something.
Okay, well, thank you all for such a late night.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
I know, you guys did the best you could, we appreciate it. Is there anything else you want to say?
Okay, so we need, so we need a motion to continue this to.
I'll move that we continue this item to a date certain, May 5th.
And, and direct staff to work with applicant and appellant to try and reach a resolution?
I'll second that.
We'll do so.
Yeah.
I second.
Did you second? Well.
I don't need to.
It was seconded and thirded.
Lucas, did it first.
Yes? Commissioner? Aye. Commissioner Lor?
Yes.
Commissioner Sodowsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
And Chair Test?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that being done, I think it's time, I, I've lost my agenda for the evening, but I think it's, I think it's time for Planning Commissioner comments. Any, anybody got any comments left in them? Seeing none, comments from the Community Development Manager.
I have nothing.
In that case, we will be adjourned to the next regular meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building on April 21st, 2015.